I'll just talk a little louder. Let's get started, guys. Say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've got everybody but Sarah. I don't think she's called in. Jeff is remote tonight, but we do have a quorum. Is there going to be any changes to the regular agenda?
I would just recommend that you move public comment to be after tax equalization, so that way if we do finish tax equalization before six, you could take a break.
Okay.
And then it'll sync up the rest of the meeting to our normal time.
Got it. All right. Do you want to move the sheriff's update past that, too? Or you want to just do that?
Either one.
Okay. We can do the sheriff's update. Leave it where it is. Okay. Anything else? Others, I'm looking for a motion to accept the regular agenda with that change.
So moved.
Okay. If anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Stephanie has a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Jeff, are you in? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Consent agenda. Any changes on that or questions?
I didn't have anything for the consent agenda.
Jase asked, let's see if he's listening on your microphone. I don't know.
I might just have to search it to your side.
Jeff, can you? Can you hear us?
I can't hear anybody.
Turn yours on, Cory. Your whole system. Done.
All right, Jeff, how about now?
Hmm, I don't know why. All right. Stephanie, do you have any changes on that?
To the consent agenda.
Yeah, or anything, any questions?
I don't. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Wait, there's a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Any changes to the minutes from last meeting? Corrections, additions?
I would like to table them because I think there needs to be some corrections with those pertaining to the discussion with Eighth in the district. So I make a motion to table them, so they can be corrected.
I agree. I have suggested changes that I would like to more accurately reflect the discussion on Eighth, so I'll second.
Okay. So Naomi made a motion, Stephanie made a motion. A second to table those until next time, so...
Or Brenton, did you want to talk about the changes?
We can table it.
Okay.
Yep, do that. We'll table it. All right. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Table that. All right. Then we will go to the sheriff's update.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Jase, have you got the?
Yep. So Keller couldn't be here tonight. So you got stuck with me.
We'll work through it.
We'll work through it. That's right. All right. So in the month of March, we had 427 calls for service in Horace. A majority of those, again, were the residents and building checks. Mostly those occur at night. I was just checking doors. There was 15 field contacts, so just us making contact with the general public, or if somebody comes up with us and we just need to notify dispatch that we are out with somebody. Some civil papers were served, 13. There was 12 suspicious calls that came out. That's kind of especially what things kind of warming up. That's been kind of a trend with the construction and everything going on lately. Some construction workers working late. Nothing's really come up from those. Within last month, we had 101 warnings issued and 42 citations issued. Total, 21 of those were issued in municipal court. There were just one parking warning that was issued and I believe two impounds that might have been a result of a traffic stop. Obviously, DUS is still a major trend. Some mental health calls. Nothing really new. There's nothing significant that I really saw last month.
It's kind of warming up this.
That had happened, yes. Just the fact that it's been warming up, especially this month, I've noticed it's become a little bit busier, especially with the traffic, all the new construction going on, a few complaints about some of the construction equipment that's being moved into town. That's...
There's going to be more of it.
There's going to be more of that, yes. So nothing really totally significant, but just the usual trend is it gets warmer, we get a little bit busier.
I see on the east side over there, north of the lagoons, you got a little bit more of a hotspot.
Yes. So we were dealing with some mental health. An individual that was suffering from some mental health episodes, which we got a lot of calls for. He was actually kind of, some of the calls were suspicious that we were getting in town. But he has been, from what I understand, he's been getting services for his mental health.
Okay.
So that was transitioned, go down luckily, hopefully.
It just stood out when we looked at the map and went, huh.
Yep, and that's where a majority of those calls, I would say, would be coming from, would be from that individual. But he wasn't really doing anything totally illegal, just a little bit off the wall.
Yep. I see you got a couple little hotspots up on 76 there. Just, is that more speeding? Watching for that?
A lot of speeding. Mostly coming off that 76th Avenue. Been kind of watching that. Been watching the cross, the crossing there, especially I've caught a few not stopping when the yellow lights are flashing.
Okay, yep.
That's good, though, to keep an eye on that, because that's something we want to make sure people understand. When those lights are flashing, you stop.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of a trend. A lot of people, as soon as they see our lights, they or see us around the area, a lot of that traffic violations, they go down. Makes it a little bit safer for everybody. Other than that, speeding is still, is obviously always kind of an issue. Something that we're still trying to enforce, trying to get people to slow down. I know this last summer, there was a new law that came out for turn signal coming out of the roundabout. That is something that Sheriff Johnner kind of touched with the base with us, that he kind of wanted us to, if we're in the roundabout and somebody's not using their turn signal, leaving it to enforce it. And I think that came into place just because there was an accident somewhere in the state of North Dakota and it must have been deemed that the turn signal was the reason behind why the accident must have happened. And there we go, a new law for the roundabouts. Other than that, I don't really have too much. Is there any questions for Sheriff's Office from the council?
Yeah, I got a message saying that there's a lot of traffic that is driving in our right-of-way that's not even a road up by Grey Hack.
Okay.
I have a picture. If you want to come take a look, just so you can maybe monitor that. I don't really want people just thinking that they can drive down that area, and it's, I'm assuming it's because of the gate closure and West Fargo wanting to just drive south. So...
Has that been recently?
Yeah, yeah. I did tell them that they should probably call dispatch and maybe get license plate numbers or whatnot, but...
Even if they want to call City Hall, too, I know we've gotten really with a few complaints, especially parking. Obviously, we get those all the time, but we'll, I'll relay that to Keller as well, and we'll keep an eye on that. Is it mostly morning time or evening time?
You know, I didn't really ask about what time. I'm assuming it's in the busy parts of the day where they just don't really want to take the time to go around, so they're just driving on a non-road. So I'm hoping you guys can maybe spend some time just to watch up in that area.
Yeah, we'll, we'll spend a little bit of extra time patrolling that area. See if we can catch anybody. Speaking of that, I know turkeys were brought up last meeting. I know I haven't really had any more updates on turkeys, but I do have another new animal problem that was brought up to my attention on Brink Drive. There was possibly two litters of foxes that are living underneath a building. The citizen we called is just concerned because of, she has chickens. So it's something that we relayed to Game Fish, and I haven't heard back from her yet. So hopefully she got a good answer. I told her to call back if something, if it's not working out. So that's something, another new thing in town. Yeah. Other than that, no other really animal complaints on our end. Basically, just dogs at large is this typical trend.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Paul, I guess you're next on the docket here.
It's state.
Oh, that is state. Okay. I was waiting for a green light. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Well, I'm just going to get set up here real quick, just in case I need some of this.
Paul, do you want the equalization report?
Um, yeah, if you want to pull that up, I suppose. Oh, good. We just had to update our passwords to like 20 characters. I always mess it up. I got it right this time. So, all right. Well, thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of the council. As you know, it's probably your favorite thing, talk about values for the year. I know everybody enjoys this meeting, but I'm going to give you a brief overview of what we saw in last year's market activity, because the 2023 market is what we use to determine the values for the 2024 year. As I've done in previous years, we put together a brief equalization report, just kind of summarizing those valuation adjustments. And the other, there's kind of two things we're trying to accomplish today. The first, if there is anybody, yeah, excuse me, if there is anybody here to appeal today, we'd like to get them on a list and move them into a pending status so we can work with them between now and the county meeting. And then the second item we're trying to do is just to approve all of the remaining values. But before we get to any of that, just to kind of give you an idea of the market last year, a lot different than what we've seen past four years or so. Not a whole lot of change. Average value throughout Cass County went from about $320,000 to $330,000. So that's 3.2% increase. Value of sales went down significantly. Building permits went down significantly. I think within the report alone, it showed we went from about 305 in Horace last year to about 218, so that was pretty decent dip in that alone. But Horace is seeing the overall average selling price of a house and the median, a little bit higher than normal just because some of the newer properties that we're getting going online here. You can see the median sell price, $450,000, the average sell price, $424,000. That's kind of atypical from the market. Usually, you're always going to see the medians below the average because some of the, you know, newer bills or outliers on the higher end are going to set that off. But I think we're just getting such influx of, you know, in some of these newer neighborhoods that are pretty decent caliber. It's, that's why you're seeing that median up a little bit higher. Going a little further into that, you're going to look at page four of that packet, and that's going to give you an idea of what we're looking for, for valuations as a whole, as a city. Not a whole lot of change in ag value. I just want to be very clear, and I really do apologize for this. We're working with our vendor, but whenever a split happens in a city, it, it takes that value away from the 2023 year, so those ag land values aren't accurate. There was barely any change from the year. It's just, it's an error with our system. We're trying to fix that, so this report can be a little bit more clear. But you guys were closer. You were actually a little bit above 5.2 million last year, and of course, as properties went on for development and became either commercial or residential, that adjustment probably went down a little bit. But you can see, commercial lots, we're looking at about 38 million growth on there, 38.7. About at least 30 million of that was from new growth, so that's from permitted work being done. So about a 5% probably market adjustment when you roll the land in, in the buildings on the commercial side. Residential, you're seeing 113 million in growth. About 75 million plus is, is new growth. Again, that's from just permits being done and finished. So when you take that into the overall valuation, we're only looking at about a 2.8, around there. It's about the average we've seen for an adjustment on a property this year. Now, that's an average. There's always going to be variances, but it's a pretty decent range. I would say the majority of properties, probably 85% or more, we're probably around that 4% or less, or 3% or less. So not a whole lot of, we're just kind of following the market this year. As you all remember, about two years ago, we went through, or is it three years ago, we kind of threw that reappraisal, got everything up, and we've just been kind of tracking the market ever since, and if we see areas that are either, we're kind of overstating their values or understating, we'll make those adjustments as we need to. But it really was in this pretty soft year, and I honestly hope we get a lot more of these. I think it's a lot easier. It's, you're in a good position. It's the city of Horace because you can see year over year, you're getting about 20% growth, but only 2%, 2.5% to 3% is probably coming from market growth on existing homes. Everything else is just new growth coming online. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the report I put together today. I guess I would also like to really give a thanks to Keith and his team at the building permit department. We can't do our job without the stuff they put together for us to get that detailed data on new construction and just permits in general. And just him giving me the information so I can put some of this stuff together for the presentation's really been, been helpful.
So Paul, a question for you. You know, we had an average what in town here of valuation increase. What was the average this year?
Average was just under 3%.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I mean, like, if you went countywide, was that about the same, or was there some situation?
It's pretty much the same. There are some review areas in our western townships that we were finding we were falling behind, and we had to do, we did some, kind of like boots-on-the-ground work out there. We were visiting properties, so they might have seen more of a growth, but pretty much for most of our cities, you know, we've been, we've finally been through the whole cycle, been through them all, and this is pretty similar to what we've been seeing everywhere else.
Okay. I was just curious, because I know we've had quite a few years here where we've had, you know, quite an increase. It's nice to see that we're maybe plateauing for a little while here, or at least simmering down as far as that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And it kind of stems back to that reappraisal year where it's the only term we can really use, but the correction year, where we're just trying to bring everything to what we feel is the correct reflection of the market, and that's where we're seeing tremendous changes.
Right.
But yeah, ever since then, it's been pretty close to just market adjustments.
But I understand that, too, because we'd never done that before.
Right.
So that was a possibility. I just didn't realize it was going to be so much.
Yeah.
When you called and we were like, oh, my goodness.
It was a countywide issue, not just a city issue, just to be clear on that. That was, that was everywhere.
You know, and just for everybody's benefit, or to understand what happened with that, too, is that the state mandated that all the cities have to go through this process. So if you hadn't done it for 30 or 40 years, you were going to do it, and that's when we had that dramatic jump, so...
Exactly.
Anything else? Questions?
I just have a couple. Paul, did you see?
Sure.
I just was jotting it down. You said there was a 5% increase in commercial. Did you say what the percentage was in our residential property for the new growth?
Oh, the, I suppose it'd be right around eight, probably about 17.5%, 18% if I were to guess. You brought in about 20% growth year over year.
Okay.
Which if, on page, what is that? Yeah, page six of the report just kind of shows the trend, and it's honestly pretty impressive to see, like, the taxable base that's changed. I mean, that just gives you an idea. We were sitting under 15 million going into 2019, and that's mostly new growth, bringing you over that 40 million taxable value, so...
And we did, I know that we did have a reduction from the year prior in our new home permits, but we still, just for residents' information, we still exceeded our building permit goal.
Oh, good.
For last year.
Good.
Yeah, I guess really my only question is, so the the total revenue from property tax is 2.3 million, correct?
That's, yeah, and I just use that as an estimate. I mean, it's obviously, yeah, it's obviously, last year, we had the same thing on there. As a board, you don't necessarily, might not even need that. And you didn't last year, and that's why the mills went down, I think, 4.8%. So to put that in perspective, what happened to people last year, if you were increased under 4.8%, your taxes actually went down. And I did spot check a few properties, and I did find a couple where their tax bills, their value went up, but their taxes were slightly down. But most people probably still did see, like, I don't know, a slight, slight adjustment to their taxes last year.
Because that really is our primary control to the rising property values, is to reduce our mill rate, or the amount of taxable that we're taxing residents, and we're maybe getting away from the word mill rate, but... And then, keeping in mind, we're only one entity on the tax bill.
Exactly, yeah.
School district is the largest.
Yep.
And my final question was, could you just remind me, when notification letters go out, what is the, what's the percentage tipping point for the letters?
I appreciate that question. Yeah, so we did send out 1,015 notices this year, and it's when your property goes up by 10% and $3,000. So it's a two-part test. Primarily, anytime there's a split of a property, we do send a notice, because you're going from zero to whatever that is. So I would say the bulk of your notices all came from there. Another thing, when new home exemptions, or any exemption of that matter expires, you're going to see a notice sent out, because typically, it's going to go up by over that. But there weren't a whole lot that went out for just market adjustments this year.
What was the dollar value? You said 10%.
10% and $3,000. I'm guessing those are some numbers that haven't been looked at in quite some time legislatively, but...
Yeah, I was just thinking. So if a resident didn't reach those, those points, how would they get notified of the increase, and would it just be when they get their?
They would not get notified. They would get an estimated tax statement in August
Okay.
that would show that. So they get that, and then they get their final tax statement in December. And like I've mentioned, the passports, it's, we're working on these throughout the year, because we always want to make sure we're getting our information right, having discussions with the property owners. August is a huge time that we get calls, because you get those estimated tax statements, and that's when you're kind of realizing, like, whoa, wait a minute.
And then do they have an ability in August, then, to have any sort of appeal process?
We'll work with them. It's hard to kind of go back retroactively at that point, because values have been, you have just certified them at a state level, and any big adjustments can impact, like, the budgets that you just set. But we do, we will work with them and review it, and if there's a huge overstatement on our site or oversight, we will make that adjustment through the abatement process.
Okay. I just was curious if there's ever any, any thought of reducing the, the bar to getting a letter? Because, I mean, if a person isn't getting a letter, and if, you know, I mean, say a person got a 9% increase every year, that's, that's sizable. To me, 5% or 6% is sizable, and then they don't really have an opportunity to...
Especially when your average sale price is at 4.50, 9% year over year, or 80 even. That's a lot.
Has there been any discussion of lowering that, the criteria?
I've seen it brought up at the state level before, but never really gotten through any of the sessions, and we haven't made a decision between Cass County to just send out to everybody. Probably have to revise my budget a little bit on postage that year. But no, it could be manageable, and it has been brought up in the past, so... And I do like to make clear, too, is all our information, we do put out at cass.northdakotaassessors.com, or also our county website. You can, you can run your own sales analysis, find sales comps on residential property, and just look through the information that we use to value your property, so you can make, ensure that's correct.
And then my last comment is just, this information that we're looking at tonight is in the packet. It should be linked on the website now. If residents were interested in looking at this, and then there's the other document which shows all of it.
Yeah, that's the more detailed one.
Is in our packet, online.
And we do also have that all available on the county website as well, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
I'd like to echo Stephanie's comments that you see a lot of people having, like, a larger increase, but not meeting the 10% threshold, and never getting that letter of notification. And if you think about it, you just showed average home is around $300,000 or more, 320, I think, is what you said. That's $32,000. If you go just shy of that, $30,000 year over year, that adds up very quickly. And so I would like to echo Stephanie's comments that that number needs to change. The values of houses now are more than double what they were probably seven, eight years ago, and that percentage doesn't hold true anymore. So you could have a $30,000 increase year over year right now, and you will never get a letter.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Paul, so I suppose if anybody has a concern right now, this is probably when they want to hand around a sheet or something.
Yeah, I do want to state, too, that out of all the notices, well, we actually had three calls, and we had to do a correction on one of the commercial properties, but we had that all done prior to putting the values in, so that's already in place. But there was a call just today. They couldn't make the meeting, but it's at 10102 Burgundy Drive, Katina Bame, and just had some questions about the land value. Obviously, I hadn't had a chance to look into it, so we'd have to put that into the pending file. And we also had a resident at 6867 Joseph Street, Maggie Brockle. She had some questions about the valuation on her property, and I guess, I'm not sure if she's in the audience today. I think she mentioned she might try to make it.
She is.
Is she? Okay. So I can step aside for a second, let her talk if she wants, or?
Yeah, however. And is there anybody else here that wants to have a conversation with Paul? I guess we...
But outside of that, I would ask that they, you know, just, yeah, they can, I brought the sign and sheet.
Yep, if anybody wants otherwise.
The infamous sign and sheet.
I know. That's fair, so that everybody has a chance to have that conversation with you if they want to.
Okay. But I'll let Maggie come up here, and then I'll try to answer any questions the commission has.
That sounds good. Hello.
Hi.
So I'm new to Horace. I moved here at the end of October last year. I just purchased a new home. It's a twin home on Joseph Street. I, um, just purchased a new home. It's a twin home on Joseph Street and, um.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us your name again, just for the record?
Okay, Maggie Brockel, B R O C K E L.
Okay.
And so I've been there for less than a year and obviously before I, um, closed on the mortgage and everything, they did an appraisal of my home. And so the appraised value of my home was three hundred and one thousand dollars. And then I got this notice from the, well, an increase, a notice of increase in real estate assessment. And they put the value of my home at three hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars. So that's a big jump, um, in value compared to the appraisal from less than a year ago. So I did call, I, I sent in an appeal by email and I also called and spoke with them. They did indicate to me that they received my appeal. And I guess the explanation that I got was that the increase of the value of my home um, included the value of special assessments on my property. And so that is why they said the taxable value was increased. And so my concern is, you know, a special assessment is a tax. And so basically now I'm being taxed on a tax.
Yeah.
If that's being added into the value of my home.
Paul, is that how that works on that? I guess I don't, that's a new one on me if that's the case.
Yep. So, uh, and I, do you just want me to stand here and talk?
Just go ahead. I'd like to know. I mean, I didn't realize this was something too.
Yeah, obviously something all of us, uh, that have found anything new or new developments, um, the special assessments hit us pretty hard. Uh, the reason, I'll, I'll sit down so this can be part of the minutes here.
Uh, the reason that we incorporate it, well, we're A, required to incorporate it because it's improvements to that land to make that livable. It's based, I know it's looked at as a tax with, because it does come out on our tax statement, but it's basically a debt pass from the developers on, and it's a loan the city's kind of providing that they need to pay back in order to live there. Uh, I think the easiest way to look at it and I think, why the state has this, if you were to have thirty thousand in specials like on your property, buy a lot for seventy thousand, got thirty thousand in specials, uh, you pay those off, you're not going to sell the lot to me for seventy thousand. It's, it's improvements that they weren't rolled in at the time of the sale, but you're still paying for. So that's why it's all part of the sale price. It's, it's an improvement to the property that infrastructure costs. Roads, lights, all those things.
So, but her taxable value was the three oh one.
Yep.
And are you saying that there was an additional fifteen thousand accrued on her property for specials? That just gets bumped up dollar for dollar?
Thirty-three thousand on there. So when we report the sales, uh, to the state, we'd have to list that. Um, it's three hundred one thou, or whatever the sale price was, I think it was three hundred thousand. And then you actually have to add in the specials to report the sale as three hundred. So her sale to the state, when we report for a sales ratio, it was reported as three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. So the value of three fifteen puts us right at about ninety-five percent.
Because the, because those special assessments weren't, when she said she had the previous value of three oh one, that was before the special assessments were assessed to her?
Yeah, she had an appraisal for the purchase of the home, um, that supported a value of three hundred one thousand. And the sale price, I think, was right around that.
Okay, but, yeah, I mean, I guess I see the concept, but that seems a little odd to me because it's like, that's what she, if she purchased the home and that was her value, a lot of those amenities were part of the reason why her house was, was she paid for it and why it was three oh one.
Right, but if you paid off that thirty thousand, would you sell that home for three oh one still? Or would you sell for three hundred thirty-three, you know what I mean? The, would you sell for three hundred thirty-one thousand or three oh one? Would you take that thirty thousand dollar hit if you paid off all those specials?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if people are, people that are looking to buy houses are.
Yeah, and I'm just not, I'm not saying what's right or wrong in it, I'm just, yeah.
Increases the value of my property by forty.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's a direct comparison. I mean, I recognize it's probably a state process. I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware of it.
Yeah, so, and I, I'm not sure if our appraiser did send out, we do have a little pamphlet we sell to, uh, send out to explain that, just kind of give some detail as to the why. Um, because I totally, I totally do understand. I mean, I'm dealing with the same thing too, and I think we all are if, if we purchased a new house recently. And it does feel on paper as a, as a double tax, but it's more, I believe the way and the concept behind it, they're looking at it more, it's just kind of like your mortgage loan. You took a mortgage out to afford your house, take a loan with the city, pay your specials, it's two different loans to make up the value of your house.
Value of the home is going, right from the get-go, gets tacked on whatever special assessments into the value of the home and then that just gets compounded every, every year. Somebody had eighty-five thousand dollars on their special assessments for their property.
Mm-hmm.
And then that's just compounded.
We'd have to add that, yep, onto whatever the sale price is and that's how we'd have to report it to the state.
That is, that's interesting.
That would explain why the property value of my place went up a little bit that first year. Okay, makes sense. That's what I thought too. Wow, that was a good appraisal value after one year. So, okay. But you'll still have a conversation with her.
Absolutely. I, I know, um, one of our appraisers that reached out and has her information, so we'll, we'll make sure to be in touch and I'll get her that pamphlet.
Perfect. Anybody else want to get on Paul's list and have a conversation that's not already called in? Okay, any other questions, um, for Paul?
Nope. Thank you for that information, Maggie. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
So again, the motion we'd be looking for is just to, um, that, just to move or to approve all non-pending values for twenty twenty-four year.
Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Stephanie makes the motion. Can I get a second?
It's Jeff on?
Second.
Jeff did a second, okay. Jeff did a second, then we did a motion. Okay, so all in favors?
I did not.
Okay, you did not. Jeff did, Stephanie did. Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
All right, so let's go to public comment then. Has anybody got anything they want to chit chat about tonight besides, uh, taxes? Yep, come on up.
Do you want me to sit down?
Yeah, come on up here, introduce yourself.
Okay. Uh, Bill Nelson, Chestnut Drive. Uh, so I just have a question. About a year ago, I had a, uh, while the, mains that were being flushed, I had water, uh, head blow off my water softener. And, uh, so here it is about a year later and I'm informed that the city is not responsible for the negligence because they put it on to the contractor. And so I should be filing a claim or they have tendered a claim with the contractor. And so I should contact them regarding that. So my point is, didn't the, didn't the city hire the contractor? And if this actually happened, which it obviously did, because you pinpointed it down to the contractor, then why am I supposed to file a claim with the contractor and get all the information together versus the city? And previously I was told, we'll just file it with my insurance company. Well, that's all, that's all good and fine, but it has nothing, it's, it's the principle behind this whole thing is if there is negligence and the city hired the contractor, who, who falls, where does that responsibility fall?
Lucas, I'm gonna let you answer that one.
So you, you said the engineer or someone filed something with contractor?
Yep.
Besides you?
Uh, supposedly. I just got this letter. As you're aware, we have tendered the claim to the contractor. We have determined that the N D I R F pool member is not liable for damages there. We, we are unable to provide any, provide you with any compensation.
Thanks, I have.
So N D R F has reviewed the claim. They've denied it, but also.
I'm sorry, N D R F?
North Dakota Insurance is our fund.
That's the city's.
So they have reviewed the claim. Uh, my understanding is that claims like this, when the city is actually doing service or anything to water systems or system, anything like that, North Dakota Central Code actually exempts them. And I could be, you know, I'm trying to phrase it from my understanding of it. However, in this situation, it was a contractor doing the work. That's where N D R F is saying it needs to go to the contractor so you can file a claim with the contractor, K P H, in this situation. And then their insurance would have to handle that.
Well, why can't we contact K P H and say, you need to fix this?
We have notified K P H of.
Did we get a response?
No.
Okay, well then we need to invite K P H here.
And we have had discussion with K P H to encourage them to try to resolve the issue. And maybe it doesn't need to go through insurance. That would be their decision. You know, we tried to encourage that, but we cannot force K P H to do that. So it's something, we're not able to force them.
K P H needs to pay the bill.
But we cannot force them.
Okay. A conduit of some of this conversation.
But I mean, this would be something, I suppose it's more of a legal thing. Lucas, is that something that you?
Well, I think that's what Brent is indicating is that it's bringing into a legal thing rather than an insurance thing. It's always the first step is to try to see if insurance will just cover it, make it just this simple situation. But if K P H is not willing to cover it based on whether or not they were negligent, then this is like a small claims type issue. I don't know how much there is.
Well, I'm not gonna mess around with it. I mean, I'm just, I'm here to say that this, the principle behind this is ridiculous in my book. And granted, it's, uh, not big bucks. I mean, it's twenty-six hundred bucks, so it's, uh, substantial. Plus the damage to my home, which I don't have a bill for, but it's the principle behind it that here I'm relying on the city to stand behind something that they hired the contractor for. And you turn around and say, okay, and it is almost a year later, four twenty-six of twenty-three. To me, it's, uh, whether it's with K P H or what, and I can call them up.
Yep.
Too, but it's the principle that I'm bringing up here today.
So are you saying that our insurance company basically said?
They have denied.
No.
They have denied the claim. And they will fall back on situations like Central Code saying, you're exempt from this, or they'll review also the claim. I know they're reviewing the claim for quite a while. I know Bill is
Yeah, they've gotten to know the adjuster pretty well and so have I. And I know I've, I've actually talked with the owner, K P H, too,
encouraging him to resolve this, um, here a little while back.
Can we try to be like Stephanie said, kind of like a mediator? Is there any way we can call them and just say, would you be willing to have a sit-down meeting with Bill here at the office? Is there any way we can get this resolved?
For K P H?
Yeah.
No, I can call Eric Mary and talk to him. I mean, that's, that's beside the point. It's the, it's the principle behind the side on this whole issue. I mean, if you want to sit me and Eric down in a meeting here, well, that, I, I can get more accomplished by just talking to Eric one-on-one. I'm here to state a, this is kind of ridiculous that the contractor was hired by the city and now passing the claim off that they're not liable, but there obviously was something wrong.
Well, I.
And I know there were, I know there were others involved.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And they, uh, filed it with their insurance or just bid it, but to me it's, and I don't, I'm not here to be a jerk, but I'm here to say that to me, this is a poor business practice. And so I'm making it known.
And like Lucas.
But it's the, it's the insurance company, not the city, right?
Yeah. Like, like.
In a roundabout way, there were some loopholes that I had to jump through to get this started to begin with, but.
So like Lucas said, legal wise, you know, we're following off the guidance from the insurance company. So that's, that's where we're coming from.
Okay.
So you've heard what I?
Yeah, I don't know what else to say. Your insurance, the city's insurance is saying it's not a valid claim. So it's, it's an issue with the city's insurance company, which is state of North Dakota.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So.
Well, thanks, Bill, for, for keeping us in the loop on the situation.
Sure.
I guess I was unaware you were still dealing with it a year later.
Well, hopefully it doesn't go on deaf ears, so.
It, it has not. I definitely hear you.
Okay, and then I have one other question and I, I called and I'd never got a response. But is, uh, Visto's addition between Industrial, uh, Drive and Fifth Street being rezoned back to light commercial? I called Jeff or I left, well, first I called and nobody called me back. Then I left a message for Jeff and I never heard anything. I don't know if Jeff is online.
No, I, I can answer, answer that. With the, the city adopting a new land use ordinance modified the zoning districts throughout the city. So there was an adjustment back to light industrial. However, there was a much expanded district throughout there for light industrial or much expanded uses out there, which is mirrors the commercial, the C three that it originally was.
Okay.
I believe I've been emailing with someone that's been working with you on that one.
Nobody's called me. I've, I've not heard anything. I just know I bought it. It was zoned a certain way. And then it got rezoned, so then I had to find a different property. And now it's going back to being zoned the way it was to start. And before I sell it, I want to know what it's zoned for because maybe I want to keep it now.
Gotcha.
So.
We can give you my email and we can chat tomorrow about all the uses you can do on it if you want.
Okay, another frustration. And that goes back a ways because I bought it in good faith and it got rezoned.
And then it got.
And then it got, uh, and now it's going back to where it was before. So communication is a big thing. And so I got two points on communication tonight, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
There your card.
I, don't we have a card on me? Let me raise it down.
All right, anybody else got any, something they want to talk about?
Uh, Rick Aldrin, I live in, uh, Riverbend. Um, as you know, the railroad tracks were removed for the flood diversion for cheaper that way. Uh, I know we do not own the land that is, I guess, fifty feet from the middle of the railroad tracks into our property. We back up to those railroad tracks. Even though all the people in our development have been taking care of it for the last thirty years, what we would, I would like, and I'm sure some of the others would like, is if, who do we talk to to get in no trespassing signs put on the railroad, the, what was the existing railroad bed? Because now a four-wheeler path. We've had people riding through the property that we have maintained. It is not legally ours, but we have maintained it, kept it mowed, kept it nice and clean. And we have people riding through the spring through there with their motorcycles, tearing up the property. It's not legally ours, but who do we talk to, to see if we can get no trespassing signs on that section of railroad bed? So it keeps from being a four-wheeler spot for cruising motorcycles. We've had people flip me off when I told them, please ride on the other side into the ditch because it's just a nice, easy path now.
Right.
The rocks are getting pushed up and over and into the grass. I've chewed up a bunch of mower blades in that since it has been, uh, the tracks have been, uh, railroad ties have been removed. We're just wondering, who do we talk to?
So it would be whoever owns it.
Cass County.
That's what is the Red River Valley diversion.
Well, city, city.
It's Cass, it's Cass County joint.
Fine, man.
That one, that parcel he's referring to is owned by Cass County Joint Fire Source District, so.
So contact, could contact those probably be?
Because we've had them coming all hours. We've had them in the evenings. At night, we've had them come through, some slow, some fast.
To kind of go off of what you're saying, I have caught them out there.
Okay.
Driving, um, had a conversation with them. Especially a lot of the dirt bikes in town. I know they're teenagers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have talked to them and I advise them, hey, I don't appreciate you guys rocking your engines in town. Just bring it up, side of town. Uh, but during that incident, yes, I agree that I did see them cut across the railroad track there. Um, so yeah, that would be something that probably the county, county own, uh, probably have to go through us to see.
Okay, cause I know they've come from, I don't know if they've come from Horace or not, but down, and they go down to the end of our development, sometimes even across the railroad bridge. So I don't know for theirs, you know, liability sake and whoever. And we just like to have them quit for noise. You know, because we've had them come through at night even.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess that's still.
When that does happen, Paul will share with us because we can, of course, help and always organize.
Problem is that by the time we see it or hear it, we can't get pictures or of who it is, you know.
But there, there's been times where I've been sitting just right across the street over here and I get here and I go on them.
Mm-hmm.
And then I go try to find them. I mean, if somebody calls them in, they see them, they see them, it may still be easier for me to catch them.
Mm-hmm.
Or you tell it, however it's in town or that.
Okay. Cause like I said, it's all different times. And like I said, we've had them. Because like I said, it's all different times. And like I said, we've had them come through, and I know the property's not ours. We would like to buy it, and I think everybody in that section would, you know, be able to buy that to the railroad tracks. But everybody has kept it nice, clean, mowed in that. So now whoever owns it doesn't have to do it. But we would like to keep them from, and I've also had snowmobilers come through there too. And they come through, and I've had them actually do turnarounds in my yard. So into my property years ago, but, um, if we could just get some no trespassing signs or fines or something on there. Because just to keep this from happening again.
Lucas, did you give them the name of the fellow contact?
I have put Melissa's name on there because she's the director, clerk, secretary of all the water resource district.
Right, I'd start there because they're the ones that own that, so let's see what they can do for that. And like you said, call dispatcher deputies when that's going on. Maybe we can't catch them every time, but when we do catch them, they'll probably start slowing that down a little bit.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Going once, going twice? Okay, Martin? Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Martin Walter, one oh six oh nine, County Seventeen South. Um, I had a question regarding last meeting, um, the executive session. And there was a motion made to put in or go ahead with, um, purchase of land from CHS on the auction. First off, I was wondering if that motion was made in the public part of the meeting, or was it made in the executive session?
Open part.
It was. During that same meeting?
You can't have a motion in closed session.
Okay, okay.
The video too, from last meeting, would show it. It was, it was maybe wasn't, um, maybe the second video wasn't video, but it was audio.
I, I don't know. I haven't looked at the recording.
I double-checked, I double-checked it.
And I didn't watch till the bitter, bitter end, because that was a long one, as you would know. So, so, uh.
It was recorded.
Okay, so there was a motion made to purchase it. And I maybe didn't hear the discussion, but is, is there a reason why that land was pursued? I mean, is there a purpose in mind?
That was done under executive session.
Okay.
That conversation was had under executive session.
Okay, and that can't be disclosed?
Not at this point, unless, Lucas, you?
I, I don't see the, any reason for, um, not disclosing the city's intended use now. Because I feel like the city's going to end up using the property. I don't even know if the city knows for sure what it's going to be using the property for at this point. But the city is, is working on finalizing the purchase agreement for that, that property. Um, my office is coordinating with CHS on that. And once the terms of the purchase agreement are finalized, we'll present that to the city council for approval. So that hasn't happened yet. That'll likely happen at the, the May sixth meeting, I think is the next one. So we'll be all ready to go.
Okay, all right. Oh, that sounds good. I'll wait to see that then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And go check out the video.
I will, I'll watch it.
It is there, yep.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move along here. Let's go to the parameters resolution. Lucas, you want to start that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. John Lundby is here to discuss the parameters resolution. Um, this is actually one of the city's smaller parameters resolutions. Uh, as you know from past experience, what this resolution does is it sets a not-to-exceed amount on the bonds and a not-to-exceed amount on interest rate, and it also sets the city's pricing committee. Uh, so for the pricing committee, again, it's going to be the mayor and the city administrator. What that's doing is designating them with authority to, uh, when they sell the bonds to accept the, the terms of that sale. Uh, the not-to-exceed amount is four million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the not-to-exceed, uh, maximum net interest cost is six point five percent. Uh, this issuance is just for one project, um, water sewer in Street Improvement District number twenty-two-two dash one, Visto Industrial Drive. Um, so that's kind of the, the high level of what this parameters resolution is for. But again, John is here. Uh, he can provide additional detail and then answer any questions that the council may have.
I didn't see anything in the packet. Do we have any paperwork on this?
Was there a resolution draft?
Uh, it wasn't drafted or didn't get finalized until Sunday, Saturday, Sunday.
It's always finalized, it's like right down to the wire.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't get a chance from, it wasn't in my packet.
So this has got to be the least amount we've tried to do a bond on in, what, seven years?
Most likely, yes. Mayor Peterson, thanks for, for having me here tonight, as members. Um, we are refunding the last district of the temporary refunding improvement bond, twenty-two-two A. Uh, it's one district, just over four million dollars. Um, happy to answer any, any, uh, market questions, fluctuations. But I can tell you that, uh, given the minute or the last couple of days that we've seen in the markets, there's been significant turmoil. And so that's, uh, with that grain of salt, I would say that we have a not-to-exceed nick or net interest cost of six and a half percent. Uh, we feel today that if we were in today's market, we're probably a hundred basis points south of that, at approximately five and a half. Uh, and for comparison's sake, when we were here last fall for the twenty-two-three C rib, our parameters were a nick of six and a half percent, and we came in at about five point eight-three. And so the, the difference between that and now is obviously the, the sentiment that rates have gone, that will hopefully be coming down over the next few months, um, which has held true until last Friday when the inflation data came out much hotter than expected, causing the markets to have a little bit of a tizzy, and then continuing today with, um, retail spending numbers coming in much stronger than expected.
Right.
And so we've got, uh, some headwinds here in the near future. Um, but again, we feel at this point, it's best to get this district put to bed that now is, is now complete. And, um, and the, uh, the issue marketed as quick as possible to, to get that long-term rate secured for the city.
Right, and I know when we talked during that due diligence meeting this morning too, about some of the odd things that are going on with the economic conditions now, the things that should happen or not and vice versa, you know, like this. So, um, when you're talking about that six point five, because we're going to bring this next week forward or two weeks?
Yeah, we, uh, will be printing our offering document as of tomorrow at noon approximately. And, uh, we will be in the market by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Um, our plan would be to have pricing done by next Thursday at the latest.
So what we're hoping for here is no berserkness for the next week and change, right?
Yes, sir.
To start sliding these around a little bit. Okay.
Outside of that, I, uh, the, uh, Moody's was, uh, engaged again for a rating, and they reaffirmed the city's existing B double A three rating. They did remove the negative outlook, uh, which was a positive step.
Which we were glad about, yeah.
Yes. Um, but outside of that, I would, I'd welcome any questions.
I know we had brief discussion about the due diligence report. Was, is that completed yet, or was that provided to you?
We, we met, Matt and I met with them earlier today. And that gets finalized probably tomorrow before they put the call out. So once we have that.
It's not finalized, okay, I would like that report.
It's just answered to a handful of different questions, so.
I would like that written report and the resolution added to the meeting packet that's published out on the website for this meeting.
Okay. Any other questions for John?
Well, I haven't been able to look at anything, so I don't know.
This is pretty much boilerplate, though, all things considered, because this is just basically going through and getting another bond.
Council, too, I apologize. John Shockley is bond counsel. I don't think he's aware that the city has the deadline for documents to be submitted. So he prepared this one, so apologies for the delay.
Thank you.
This is, this is also a moving target, too, right down to the wire. This is a moving target.
No, I get it.
So we tried to lock it in. It's late, you know, it's close to the timing of the bond going on market.
Right.
I understand.
And this is a refinancing, so. Not borrowing new money, it's the refinancing of existing.
Jeff, if he's got any questions, he may not be able to hear me.
Jeff, do you have questions? I don't know if you hear us.
No, I do not have questions.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
I'd just like to see the document too. Oh, thank you.
John, I'm also going to assume being this is kind of a lower issuance that we've had, this will probably go fairly quickly. There won't be much, there won't be days involved with this more than likely.
That's correct. Uh, we'll see, um, the same cast of characters as we always do on a small, large issue. We'll, we'll be sending this out to all, um, gathering the largest investor pool that we can to drive down the cost for the city. And, um, yep.
I'm assuming it'll be the usual suspects that have gotten involved with this before, because they like the.
That's correct.
They like the bonds, so.
That's correct.
I don't know, Lucas, I'll ask, is there anything unusual in here that's different than any of the other one of these that we've done? It's just the numbers, right? Yeah, okay.
So it was four point eight-five million and then six.
Six point five percent.
Six million, okay.
And that was for Vistos? Or maybe you don't.
Twenty-two-two dash one.
Maybe you don't refer to it as, yeah, okay.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Be nice if we could get in the fives with this one again, you know. But I know it's a little bit more volatile this time than it was last fall, too. So. Any other questions then? Okay, what I'm gonna do is look for a motion then to accept the parameters resolution to six point five percent and then four point eight-five cap.
Okay, I will make the motion, um, as said.
All right, Naomi makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Jeff, I'll do a second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on this one, all right? All right, Eric, you got the next one here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I get to fill in for Jim tonight, so please bear with me as I try my best to do so.
Yeah?
Um, this item is for water sewer in Stormont Street Improvement District number twenty-two-three dash one, South Hill Farm Sixth Edition. Um, I believe in the packet you would have got, uh, final plans, final specs, and some like revised, uh, for the review set of plans, ninety percent. So, um, Jim, in his memo, had a project schedule, um, showing approved plans and specs tonight. And then, um, for this project to be advertised in the paper, um, April twenty-fourth, May first, and May eighth. And then with a bid opening of May fourteenth, project would be substantially complete by the end of August. And final completion mid-September. The engineer, uh, the consultant engineer for the project has submitted final plans and specs, to the city staff's liking, I guess. And then just something to note is all, all local improvements for this project will be assessed to the specific area. So Jim is recommending that the plans and specs be approved contingent on city staff final review. I think there's some like housekeeping items, uh, getting the quest number and stuff for the bidding. Because I think that's going to go through the city's bid portal. And then the second recommendation would be to direct the auditor to advertise for bids. So two action items.
Okay. Jase, is that going to be for the final review, just the formality, nothing?
Oh, I, I, I'm not necessarily involved in the civil plan review, so I would assume they got some final technical hands.
Just, I'm just wondering if there's any hiccup that we could be looking at here. It's no big deal.
Not that I'm worried. None that I'm worried. They've, they've addressed all those city's comments, Jim's comments.
Okay.
It gives us leeway to where if we do see something, you know, pops up last minute or something, they have a correction. We're able to make the correction without having to ask for a special meeting to come back.
Yep, no, that's fine. Just double checking on that. There wasn't something else we were missing here, so, okay.
Typically, it's been pretty well ironed out before we bring plans and specs to the city council.
Yep, and it's usually the way it is. That's why I was just double checking on that. Uh, you guys have any questions on this one?
No.
I don't. I just know that the ID agreement, right, was reviewed on December eighteenth within a pending exception, right, for removal of like a landscape barrier. Were there any other changes to the ID agreement?
If there are any changes, they would be brought back to you.
Okay, okay.
So.
Um, then that's, that's all that I had.
Jeff, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. All right, then if there's no questions on this, I'm gonna look for a motion. We can do it for both of these. Look for a motion for the resolution approving plans and specs with the contingents, and then, uh, resolution directing auditor to advertise for bids. Somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to, do you want me to resuscitate it, or can I say so moved?
Say so moved, I guess.
So moved, if that is agreeable.
Okay. Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi does a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Now it's for both of them.
Yeah.
All right, Eric, you got the next one here, too.
All right, so number eleven here, um, just gonna read Jim's memo verbatim, and it pretty much explains it. Um, Casperell Water District, uh, has requested a pipeline easement from the city of Horus adjacent to One Hundredth Avenue in the Maple Lakes Estates Edition. The pipeline easement would be north of the West Pond, shown on the location map here. So Casperell provides easement for review. Uh, the Horus City Attorney reviewed the document and provided comments. The attached easement document incorporates those comments. As stated in the memo from Casperell, the project involves the installation of approximately nine and a half miles of new water pipelines and the respective appurtenances to improve Casperell's distribution system. These improvements are necessary to continue offering uninterrupted and reliable, uh, rural water service to its customers. And I guess construction is anticipated to start summer twenty-twenty-four. So Jim recommends approving the easement as reviewed and as presented.
What size pipe are they gonna put in over there, they say?
Good question, Peterson.
I might have missed it. I just, if you knew off the top.
I don't personally know. I haven't been too involved in this one, but it might say.
Not.
How many miles, Mike, was it again?
Nine and a half.
And this easement isn't just in relation to the city-owned portion of a property, of the pipeline access, right? That's city-owned property there, north of the drainage pond? Okay.
I don't know the size.
No, it's fine. If you, if you knew, no big deal. Okay. Um, any other questions on this one? This is just kind of getting some easements set up for a water line, so. Lucas, did you see any concerns with that when you looked through it?
We, uh, sent our revisions and they got incorporated into the, uh, easement, but no, it's our draft easement form.
Okay. All right, any other questions or concerns? Jeff, any concerns?
Do they know how many, uh, do they know how many days the water's going to be shut off to do this?
Um, I mean.
I'm assuming they have to shut off water to make the lakes and country acres.
Yeah, there would have to be some, some notification, um, that would go out. And I mean, standard practice is four-hour shut-offs, um, typical. But if there was anything more major than that, they would, they have a, a notification system where they put door knockers out and.
Yeah.
And do, you know, take care of that stuff, so.
Can we make sure that we're communicating that to the area somehow? Like letters being sent like a week or two prior, like what do we need to do?
So they're, they'd be required to, like Eric was talking about.
They send them.
It's their service area and their requirement for that, to provide notifications.
We, we do coordinate with Casperell, um, often.
Okay.
Remind me, comes into our office all the time, so we, you know, we can, we can facilitate that and make sure that they.
This isn't their first rodeo. I mean, they've done this before, so.
I know, but I mean, we've had, you know, in the past, we've also had lots of complaints about just water being shut off in general, and we were doing the upgrades for like my area, for example. So I just want to make sure that we're.
And no doubt, the city would be getting the calls, but Casperell gets calls too, so they don't work there, you know.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the pipeline easement on Maple Lakes Estates.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve a pipeline. I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve a pipeline easement on the north side of Maple Lakes, water retention funds.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I will second.
Okay, Naomi does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Eric, you got the next one.
All right, so item number 12, the city Horus was informed by the home builder of 6885 Thomas Street in South Hill Farms of a sanitary sewer issue. Brookstone Development's contractor connected the sanitary sewer stub as usual and continued with their home building. A sewer backup occurred prior to the completion of the home. Brookstone Development televised the line to determine the problem causing the backup. Their inspection determined that fitting at the end of the service line was apparently not glued, causing foreign material under the pipe, causing the backup. So the sewer service line was re-excavated and corrected. In that correction, I guess, it was dry concrete, exposing the sanitary service line and repairing. And then in discussion with Brookstone Development, it was determined that this is a one-off situation and not a recurring problem for the other services.
How do we know that?
That's what they've said.
We, we've had quite a bit of development, you know, homes built in-
And no issues.
Subdivision without issues.
Okay.
So what they're asking for is a split of the invoice with the city, so Westland Excavating invoice that's attached has a total amount of $8,945. Half, that would be $4,472.60. And then if approved, the amount will be paid with the South Hill Farms fourth edition project funds. So, and typically, I mean, you know, the services as part of the project are installed from the sanitary sewer main under the road and then out to 15 feet past the property line. We do require a contractor to televise all the services, and that was done, those services, that service was reviewed at the time of installation. There was no obstructions or debris or anything like that, so hard to, hard to say, but, you know, they're saying that it wasn't glued, it, it's very possible that the riser, the televising register wasn't.
And I'm really sorry, I'm not quite understanding why we would have to split the cost with Brookstone. I don't, I don't really fully understand that. I've been trying to figure this out all day, I'm not wrapping my head around it, I don't know how that issue's become our issue.
Um, I mean-
Are we just paying them just to make it easy, or like, what's, what's the deal?
Standard practice is for all the joints to be glued, and so-
So is, is this a problem that, like, we screwed up with the inspection of it, or?
Well, I, I wouldn't say that you could really inspect every single joint as glued, you know, typically they have their, it's, I mean, they have their, their primer and their, and their glue ready at every joint, and it could be that, you know, a laborer just maybe forgot one joint, I don't know.
But we have to split the bill? I, I don't understand, you guys, I'm really sorry, like, I really am trying to understand why we have to pay part of the bill.
Would the, would the contractor that did the work potentially have the responsibility? I don't know what that was.
During warranty period.
They are in a one-year warranty period. They, you know, like I said, they, they do, they are required with these projects to televise that service line, and, I mean, the televising video that was submitted didn't have that debris, didn't have the issue, so.
Brent, if it's in the warranty period, why don't you just have a contact?
They're, my understanding is they're claiming that it wouldn't be, have to be glued or not, and we're going, well, should be, but it, it's one of those he said, she says, no matter, anywhere you go, it's, it's a, it's a he said, she said across the board.
And that was the first step, once, you know, once the issue was brought up, we reviewed the, the televising videos, sent it right to the contractor, they reviewed it, and so, yeah, you know, we did what we were forced to.
Lucas, really? Don't you think we should be-
I agree, well, this is the first time you've had all day.
He's thinking about it over there.
Yeah, I, that's why I asked, it was in the warranty period.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable signing off on this until I know if, like, if it's in a warranty period, why-
Yeah, I feel like-
My understanding is contractor is not taking claim of the issue.
But they forgot to glue it.
And that's, we haven't had any other issues with any other locations, that's what we're saying.
But it was a one-off situation that they forgot to glue the piece together.
We'll, we'll look at it further, so I can talk to Brent, Lucas, too.
Why don't we table it then? Let's table it till next time.
Thank you.
And I have one question, that's real quick. Was the original contractor even notified? Because it looks like they just went out to Westland Excavating and had them fix it. Do you guys know if, if the original contractor was even notified?
Yes, they were, yes.
The, the originally submitted televised video was forwarded to the contractor, and they reviewed it again, and that was their, their, their response, I guess.
Okay, like I said, we'll table it till next time.
I, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 13, Eric, go ahead.
All right. So item number 13 here is a developer's reimbursement request. So during the construction of Cup Creek second addition, Cass County Electric Company installed 17 board road crossings. This work was provided as an aid to construction from Cass County Electric and invoiced to Dabber Custom Homes, the developer. This work is required to provide electrical service to the new addition, and the amount of the invoice is $17,000. So this work would be a project cost, and the funds would come out of the 2022-11 Improvement District. So we did, we did have a meeting recently with city staff and interstate engineering with Cass County Electric, a productive meeting, you know, trying to facilitate some of this coordination that needs to happen for developments and getting dry utilities to them, and it's tough with dry, dry utilities, because you gotta have to, you have to know the location of, of all these crossings, and sometimes they don't have their design, you know, finalized at, at the point of the development's plans, you know, being finalized as well, so it's project costs.
Pretty standard, you know?
Yeah.
Project.
I'm assuming it's 17 grand, and would that come out of the, that comes out of the project cost, right?
Project cost.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, any questions on that? Jeff?
No questions.
Okay. Because I'm gonna look for, to approve the reimbursement on, for 17,000.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Eric, you got the next one.
All right, Jim loaded me up here.
Yeah, you did.
Uh, number 14 here, water sewer storm and street improvement district, number 2024-3, Creek Estates second and third addition. Believe you were provided with a project location map and district boundary map as well for your review. So Deer Creek Estates LLC has petitioned the city Horus for the public improvements to portions of Deer Creek Estates 103rd. The special assessment district consists of about 35 acres in total. Of that, Deer Creek Estates LLC owns 59.9%, being that they own over 50% of the parcel area of the district, a resolution of necessity would not be required for the project. I guess what we're looking for as far as action items would be a resolution creating the district and a resolution directing the engineer to prepare the engineering report.
My understanding, just so you know, if, Jace, you can scroll, see the boundary map there, just for your reference there, my understanding is the properties included in this district are developer-owned, so-
It's all new development, correct?
It's all undeveloped land or non-developed land right now, and there are two different developers own the land within this area, so one is the Deer Creek Estates developer, and then that larger parcel there is owned by another developer, so-
Okay.
I believe that larger parcel is in there mainly for stormwater, but I believe there's maybe some other benefits there, like Deer Creek Parkway or things like that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any questions on that or concerns? Against new development, this is kind of going through the motions to get it started.
Okay, I can make a motion to, for the resolution creating the district for-
You wanna do both of them?
Sure.
Please, do them, I would encourage you to do them.
Separate, okay.
Okay, for Water Sewer Storm and Street ID number 2024-3.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion for resolution creating the district, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carries, and then what's the second one? Who wants to make a motion for that one?
I can make a motion for a resolution directing the engineer to prepare the engineering report for Water Sewer Storm and Street ID number 2024-3.
Okay, can I get a second on that one?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie does a second on that one, all right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Could you just, just remind me then, what, what are the next steps then on this project? There's no resolution of necessity, correct? So what are the, what will the next steps be on the project?
So, prepare the engineering report and-
Bring it back to us for review.
Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next one. Jace, we're gonna give Eric a break here.
Yes, we will. All right, Mayor and members of the council, we'll make this one relatively quick. Within your packet, there's a memo for the signed variance for 7675 Jack's Way, essentially with, with the action of city council on April 2nd, 2024, voided the need for this variance application moving forward with a new land use ordinance, and we pre-noticed it in advance just in case council decided to not make that amendment, and we still needed to get this onto a hearing schedule. So this, I guess, is just a formal withdrawal of the application, which I don't know if we need a motion for them to formally withdraw it or not, or we just move on to the next.
I mean, they need it on the agenda, but that's the explanation.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, that's all I have for that one.
So we don't, we don't need to take any action?
No action.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move along to number 16 then.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an application for Jackson Alley first addition. The applicant has filed a subdivision application to subdivide approximately 22.91 acres into 16 total lots. Additionally, the applicant proposes to rezone the property from its current district classification of EG to RE. I would note with the rezone, and we'll get into this a little bit, there will be, is a part of your motion for the rezone, a determination of whether or not to amend the future land use map. As I should note, that the current view of the land use designation on the financial land use map is Greenway, and the request for RE is not deemed as compatible with that designation. Like you said, the applicant actually submitted a rezone and subdivision application for this property back in November of 2021, which was tabled by the Planning and Zoning Commission on their January 26, 2022 meeting. These are continuation of that original submittal. In that time since the application was originally tabled, staff has worked with the applicant to refine the application and ensure a necessary infrastructure would be in place and process, or in process prior to bringing the application forward. Staff has made some progress in getting a necessary offsite infrastructure in place, but we do feel that a condition of approval should be added to this development stating developers required to acknowledge through an improvement district agreement, development agreement, or other form of agreement, that the development of the proposed subdivision cannot take place until necessary offsite improvements have been completed. The proposed development, it will be connected to Casperell Water and City Sewer. The improvement districts for the sewer project were created by the city council on November 20th, 2023. There is no new park land dedication requested with this project. The Horus Park District instead requested or recommended a payment move of amount of And then on March 12th, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to review the application and received testimony to provide a recommendation to city council. The commission voted 3-2 in favor of amending the future land use map from Greenway to suburban. During the discussion, the commission requested the developer reduce the number of shared access points on the 81st between this development and the next agenda item, and the developer ultimately reduced them from seven total accesses down to four. The commission then tabled the plat and rezone until additional information could be received from Southeast Cass Resource District, or Southeast Cass Water Resource District and the diversion authority regarding any additional easements or requirements for development between the two diversions. That got brought back to Planning and Zoning Commission on March 26, 2024. City staff presented the Planning and Zoning Commission with the information that was received from both of those bodies, and then following their discussion, they voted 4-0 to recommend approval of the plat and rezone for Jackson Alley first addition to the city council. So with that, staff would recommend accepting the findings and recommendations of the staff report and approve the future land use map amendment, rezone, and subdivision for Jackson Alley first addition with the following condition, that developer and/or applicant shall acknowledge via agreement that the development of the proposed subdivision cannot commence until necessary offsite infrastructure has been constructed and installed, which would be included in our usual agreements. As you can see, applicants and representative are here tonight, and with that, I will stand for any questions, remember that this is a public hearing as well.
Down, open up as a public hearing, we'll do that for both, do it for both the rezone and the plat.
Yep.
Do them together. All right, so anybody have any questions on this one?
I have a couple. What's the distinction between, so it was a 3-2 vote on commission in favor of amending the future land use map, how does that, amending or not amending, impact zoning and plating?
So your, your future land use map is a long-range guide for how the city is supposed to build out, and typically if, even though it is a guide, if there's not similar uses in the area, or there's such a distinction between your designation and your actual district, and the city opts to move forward with rezoning without kind of an amendment to that process, there is potential claim for spot zoning, which is just kind of picking a, a piece of property and zoning it whatever, whatever you want. It's just more of a, a best practice to amend your future land use map as you're going through rezones if they're not deemed as compatible. Staff fully understands, like, it's a narrow stretch, the, the diversion's been using that as land swap property, like, the only type of development that really could probably go there is what they are proposing. It's just, I think, part of the, our commission's concern with this was previous ordinance, which this was submitted under, doesn't really lay out a process for amending the future land use map, there's not really a public hearing process or anything apart from a larger comp plan rewrite, and so there, I think there was a little bit of concern amending it through the public hearing process, but as you could see through their approval, or recommendation of approval of the plat and rezone, those passed in unanimously. So there was just some, I think, hesitation, I guess, with that. Does that make sense to answer your question?
It does, and so if, if we approve the amendment, is it just to this specific area, or is it a contiguous property?
It'd be just this specific area.
Just this specific area, okay.
And you see with the next application, there's the next piece down, and then the application after that is in the same boat. Part of that was, I think, when the city did the comp plan in 2018, there was not a lot of idea where the diversion fully alignment was gonna be, so they did a lot of preservation area within the green space. At that point, too, there was a lot of talk of the recreation component, so there was, let's make sure there's extra room for recreation pieces, and the diversion has since kind of made the statement, we build diversions, and the recreation will come after, but they've also identified that recreation component would fall within the guise of the diversion boundary itself and not adjacent property.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other questions?
I do have just a couple more, but I'll defer if other council member have questions.
No, go ahead.
Okay, just some small questions, I know we talk about specific conditions, maybe in the ID agreement, that infrastructure will be in place, and I think we're all, we're probably talking more 81st, aren't we? Are we, are we primarily talking about the paving of 81st?
81st, and then there is the sanitary sewer coming down there as well through 76 and 81st as well, so that would be basically attempting to avoid the repeat of Lost River in having a non-improved surface. in having a non-improved surface with vehicles entering. And that will prove, I think, more so important with the larger one, which is be the third item down the list that we'll talk about. But there is probably a desire to improve that surface before additional vehicle trips go down.
And we're still, we're on the same page with that improvement? Or what do you see as the timing then?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jack Dwyer for Jackson Alley, L O C and Ed Samuelson. Andrew Thode with Lowry Engineering. I'll, I guess, all three projects, Jackson Alley 1 and 2 and Lost River West. You know, I guess, together we are just waiting for those regional improvements to be constructed by the city before we're, I think, bidding out the project or we're getting close to knowing when the deliverable is from the city before we're gonna start getting real serious about bidding our project, just so that the contractors don't, you know, aren't on top of it themselves.
Okay. Do you, do we, could you show us what the assessment district is again for 81st improvement? I mean, I think I remember what it is.
When I say that was.
I'm sorry, and if you don't, I.
I don't have it written for me.
Yeah, I'm going off the top of my head.
It's generally west of 81st.
Yeah.
So from 76th, half mile all the way down to.
Yep.
Is it, is it all, I mean, I went and looked a little bit yesterday too. I mean, it's all, for lack of a better term, it's all developer-owned land, correct?
For the most part, yes.
Correct.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
Can I take a look?
Is this the red, it's the red line? No. It's the blue. Oh, no, this is, this is for, this is for the sewer. I think this is the sewer.
Yeah, that's the sewer.
That's the sewer one. There's a separate one for 81st, I think, yeah.
Correct.
This is the sewer. Yeah. Thank you.
And would all be west of 81st there? I'm not exactly sure the.
Okay, it's developer-owned.
I believe so.
Land, okay, okay. And so is that something, I mean, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but is that something where we were gonna go through our normal assessment process? Jim's gonna.
Yeah, Jim is.
We'll do the engineering report and we'll do the bids and the normal process? Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if that was gonna be something handled more privately or if that is just a normal process.
81st is going through the public, through the special assessment process.
It's gonna go through the normal process, okay. And that's in process now?
Yep, it's, but it's at the early stages there. You know, with all the different projects, we're just, we're trying to chip at each one. And we could only do so many at one time.
And you know, that's my concern is just that the necessary infrastructure is in place. And I guess I think more of the roadway. I mean, I recognize that the sewer, which is another discussion is.
And sewer is getting ironed out. So we, I know we've had quite a few talks internally with our staff. I know Nersay has talked with Lowry Engineering some and they've gone back and forth, but we'll be pushing for those conversations to keep moving on so we can get this ironed out. Yeah, but also the district for the sewer, I can't recall if we had that one established yet or not, but we're looking at that, so.
We did, and then.
Yeah, we did establish that one, yeah.
More, but.
Yeah.
And then my only other comment was very random, the private frontage road. I know we sometimes inherently have some issues with private roads just because sometimes residents are thinking that they're city and then when the city's not maintaining them, I mean, do we have any concerns about that? I recognize this is a little bit of a different development. It's just a line of larger lotted homes.
I don't know if there's immediate concern. Obviously, the distinction between private and public has to be well-known. I know.
I'm assuming we would put some signage on there.
It's just that we run into issues before in other developments when people, they don't understand.
Yeah.
Like, a good example would be like that road by the Dairy Queen.
Yeah.
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 And the color coordination is supposed to be helped. This would be sort of more as, I guess, an access drive and I don't know if it necessarily would be signed as like a, you know, a Timbuktu road because it would be more within an access easement, extension of a driveway almost in that sense. And Jack, unless we were planning on naming, I don't think we had any plan to name that. With that, I think we could definitely figure out a way to provide some distinction for folks, but with just the way that this development orients, it didn't make a lot of sense to carve in a public right of way throughout there as well.
I agree, yeah.
Especially trying to limit the accesses that do come on to 81st at some point.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on the rezone ordinance or the plat? Concerns?
I don't have any concerns. I like that we took a few of those access points out, out of there. Do you have anything, Stephanie?
No, just my concern about structure and as long as we are discussed it and it's gonna be in the ID agreement, I think that those are my questions.
Okay. Jeff, you have any concerns?
No concerns.
Okay. Guess with that, then, there's nothing else? Anybody's got any other comments or concerns?
Do you want to hug the mic?
I'm here for the zoning of Jackson 24.
Okay, so.
Do we need to handle items A through C separately? Or do we have action on all of them?
All you're doing is the plat and rezone, really doing A and C.
A and C, okay.
Yep.
Can those be handled together? Should they be separate?
I think yes, Brent said he prefers them separate for.
Yeah, I'd prefer separate if we can.
That's fine, we'll do them. I don't want to overdo it here. So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing on both the rezone and the plat. And I am gonna look for a motion to approve the rezone ordinance first reading.
What's, I'm sorry, the word ordinance?
Rezones are an ordinance.
Okay, but this is just a rezone specific for this development?
Yeah.
Okay.
So any rezone is an ordinance and so that's what requires the two readings.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the rezone ordinance for Jackson Alley Edition.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I can second.
Yeah, we does a second. All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. I'll look for a motion on the plat to accept the plat as is.
I'll also make that motion to approve the plat for Jackson Alley Edition.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We'll go on to 17. I guess that's rinse, wash, and repeat, right?
Essentially, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, this is a public hearing for a plat and rezone of approximately 8.26 acres into five lots. And again, changing the district classification from EG to RE. Otherwise, it is identical to the last meeting. Staff would recommend, again, based on the commission's recommendation, to approve the rezone and subdivision for Jackson Alley. That condition with the following condition of developer and or applicant shall acknowledge be in agreement that the development of proposed subdivision cannot commence until necessary offsite infrastructure has been constructed and installed. I will stand for any questions and again, the applicant is here as well.
I'll open for the public hearing on both the rezone and the plat, so. Any comments on that? On this one?
My only question on this one was the sewer lift station. I assume is part of the assessment district for sewer, the sewer improvement district?
The big, the big one?
I believe that is correct. And Andrew, I think you're correct and wrong, that is proposed to be located within the next.
It was on a, was on one of the plat maps.
So Lost River West is proposed to have a very large lift station on it. Jackson Alley will have a separate lift station, both of which will tie into the same forest main that the city is putting in. At this point, I don't know if we've determined if the Jackson Alley lift is private or public. I think we assumed it was private, but there's, yeah, there's two separate lifts.
When you say private, what do you mean?
Whether it's a city-owned lift or a HOA-owned lift.
So then the HOA takes care of it?
Funding standpoint. So I think the city's probably gonna take ownership of it, would be my guess, but I don't think we've ironed all that out.
We're ironing that out. We're wanting to keep that flexibility though for it. What Andrew's referring to, that other lift station, the smaller one, is a lot smaller than what we typically have for lift stations. So being that it's not as many houses, do we take on that lift station or not? But best just to keep the flexibility and we'll iron that out.
Would that just be priced in the lots then? Are those lots, if it's private, it wouldn't be part of the assessment district?
If it's private, it would not be part of the assessment district. So yeah, the developer would have to incur the cost if it was done privately.
Okay.
And how they, if they have it through NHA or have it through lot prices, that would be up to them to decide.
Okay.
So.
Okay, any other questions?
That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else? Jeff, do you have any concerns or questions?
No questions.
Okay. All right, one more time, anybody got anything else they want to add here?
No, I was at the planning and zoning meetings, so I'm pretty caught up on these.
Okay. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing on both the rezone ordinance and the plat. And, all right. I'm gonna look for a motion then on to accept the rezone ordinance first reading on Jackson Alley Editions second.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Okay. Yeah, we make some motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Oh, Jeff can have it.
All right, Jeff's got it. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. The same thing with the plat, to approve the plat for Jackson Alley Edition, second.
I can make that motion.
Okay, yeah, we make some motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. We come to the last one here, Jase.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the applicant has filed an application to subdivide approximately 168.51 acres into 146 total lots. Additionally, the applicant's proposing to rezone 168.51 acres with its current district classification of EG to R6 with the previous ordinance, which would be compact residential, new one, high-density residential and PF public facilities. And again, this is kind of the same vote as the last two is the eventual land use map of Greenway and Suburban on this. So something to consider as well as you're thinking through the rezone. Oh, let's go down the list of what we got in this one. So main access to the site will be via 81st Street, South and Wall Avenue. Ingress, egress for the proposed development will be provided by Benson Circle and Whitetail Way. Internal local roads of Benson Circle, Whitetail Way, Cardinal Lane, and Pioneer Drive are proposed circularly throughout the development, as well as some internal pathways being provided throughout the development. Future phases will bring additional pathway connections into planned recreation components of the diversion. There was a small error, or not error, but problem with the block length of Block 6 along Whitetail Way. That was brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In working with the applicant, they have provided a shared use path right of way within your updated plat. That does resolve that issue. Again, the proposed development will be connected to Casper Water and City Sewer. And then proposed improvement districts were approved by the city council. The Horse Park District has reviewed the application and intends on a recommended land dedication as signified on the plat. And that's specifically Lot 6 or Lot 9, Block 6. However, due to potential dollar amounts of special assessments driving from the property that would be applied to the Park District property based on the current assessment policy, the Park District has held off or has not submitted a recommendation letter for public land dedication until that further discussion can be had. March 12, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to review the application, receive testimony, provide a recommendation to the city council. They were in favor of the future land use map amendment, so they did vote to recommend approval of the rezone and plat applications with the conditions that the Park District is the owner of Lot 9, Block 6, as depicted on the plat and a multi-use pathway provided as a block for breakup for Block 6. So as I mentioned, Block 6 has been broken up, so that portion has been corrected. Staff would note that they're legal and staff will have to work with the applicant to correct the formatting of the lot and blocks just so there is an actual visual breakup of the blocks or technical through the plat. But we can get that corrected before the recording. With that, based on Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations and staff's review of the application, staff is recommending to accept the findings or recommendation of the staff report and approve the rezone and subdivision for Lost River West Edition with the following conditions, which have already been satisfied, but will include them anywhere, is provide right of way for a mid-block pathway along Block 6. And then again, the developer acknowledgement of infrastructure needing to be in place before development continues. Again, this is our public hearings. Applicant is here as well, so any questions? Happy to try and answer them, but I think we can open the public hearing.
Yep, I'll open up the public hearing for the rezone and for the plat, so we'll start that. Anybody got any questions on this one?
Well, I guess I am a little confused on how we do, like, how do we approve the plat though? If the park's not.
So ultimately, the way our ordinance is structured, the city council at the end of the day, whether the Park District issues a letter or not, controls public land dedication and can maybe the final determination of that. So if, and Lucas correct me if I'm over speaking on this, but if the council agrees that that currently designated piece of property would be sufficient for the Park District to own, they have every right to say that the Park District will own that. Is that correct?
The Park District makes a recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council.
Well, if they were holding off for a reason, like, is it appropriate for us to be like, well?
The city council has final say in property. If they don't want the property, then the city could either take the property or the city could request payment in lieu of the property. The city could hold the property for the Park District or the city could do something else to the public benefit for the property.
So then, do we just, if that's the case, then you'd have to do like an amendment then?
Amendment to what?
Like, if they don't want it and then we have to take it back somehow? Like, if we approve it with them as the owner?
I wouldn't approve them as the owner if they don't want it. This is the same issue that happened in Prairie View.
Yeah.
The Park District had a lot that they did not want. So I recommend you not do that. How it would happen is the city would take it and it would be in the city's name.
What do we do tonight then?
But.
What do we do tonight then?
So.
It says the Park District is holding off on submitting their recommendation letter. And are we talking about just dedication of the land or the future concepts for the parkland?
Just dedication of the land.
Just the actual land? But if they're saying they're holding off on it, how can we approve tonight?
I think they're saying they don't want it.
No, they're, Jack, maybe Jack can fill in these conversations. My understanding, if Jack remember wrong, is that they do want it. They just, they have concern of future assessment totals based on the load factoring of the policy that would drastically differ what that park would look like, correct?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the Park District, we've had a lot of meetings with them. We've met with them regularly for about a year about this. And we've gotten as far as, I mean, pretty thoroughly designing a public park that has four youth baseball fields and two youth baseball infields because of the demand for the, for ball fields around here. And the, I think the park board is excited about the park. However, they were, the assessment policy, they asked Jim to provide some estimates of what they're gonna face for special assessments, not counting the construction of the park. And it was extremely expensive, you know, like, much more expensive than was assessed in say like Metalark Park or Terror Guards Park for those publicly financed parks. So I'm gonna have to deal with the assessment policy itself, which I understand the city is going to be working on. And so I think the idea today is getting us an approval so that we know we're moving in the right direction where we can iron out the park dedication or the assessment policy with the park. You know, we do have some time with the regional improvements that are needed to iron those things out. So I don't, you know, if the Park District doesn't want this park, I think we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and probably do some replating or something. So that would be.
So it would be an amendment?
I think it would.
Potentially down the road, and Lucas correcting me if I'm wrong in this case, because the Park District has not issued that letter, although intent would say they are interested in it, would we be in a better position to amend, or have council amend the plat tonight to make the city the owner as it puts it in a holding order?
Would we be in a better position to amend, or have council amend the plat tonight to make the city the owner, as it puts it in a holding order?
Because if the park later on decides they want it, the city can just dedicate it to the park.
I don't know that I'd want to take it on tonight and then be left holding the vague at some point. Or why would we do that?
Just give you options. City, city council has the ultimate decision on what to plan in case.
No, I think we keep it in the park's hands.
Um, can we just make it conditional upon the park's acceptance of the?
You mean approval tonight?
We'd love to have an approval tonight.
No, I mean approval tonight contingent upon the parks getting their letter of recommendation into us?
Uh, yes, at some point.
Um, do we remember, so, I mean, and it's an obvious question. I suppose they're concerned about the load factoring that's, that's creating. Um, so, I mean, it's gonna shift the costs, just all the other pieces of the property, obviously, in some fashion.
Right, which is how we designed the park. I mean, we don't have a lot of street frontage for that purpose.
So, do, can you remind me, and I was at some of the park meetings, um, so they're planning a six, a six baseball field complex. What was the estimated cost again for the, for the amenity? Does anybody remember?
It was about three point three million.
Okay. I mean, is there discussion at the park level about, I mean, if, if the amenity they want to put in is three point three million, how much was Meadowlark?
Two point five.
So it means it's gonna be more expensive than Meadowlark, and that doesn't even, that doesn't even.
I don't know if that's apples to apples.
No, I know, but I'm just trying to, as a, as a thought of, of, of cost, and that doesn't even include the special assessments just on, just on the property. Um.
Twenty twenty.
I don't know. I guess, to me, it's a little bit, I mean, do we know that if that's a concept that's going forward in that development, there is sufficient parking for, for this? This is gonna bring a lot of additional traffic into, into this neighborhood.
Yeah.
I would want to make sure the lot owners understand that they're gonna be, and if, if they're gonna be special assessed for the park, um, they're gonna pay for an amenity that's likely gonna be rented out most of the time to the public, that they can't even use. Do we, do, do you think that the Park District plans to, has there been any talk on how they plan to, to pay for the ball diamond?
Um, we've talked just generally, but, you know, maybe in part a special assessment for a lot like Meadowlark, um, and then you know, there's also West Fargo Baseball or, um, pri, you know, I guess they have private funding, so we've talked about that. You know, so I guess I'm a hundred percent sure, but that's what we've talked about so far.
But the load factoring on that's gonna change probably from what we've been looking at here, you know, with their currently dealing with, or why I know the park board's a little excited about the load factoring, that will more than likely change as we're looking at the, how to proceed forward with what we currently got and changing that, because it is excessive in certain areas.
And it is, it would be park controlled. If they put a complex in there, park staff, park maintain, park paid for. Listen, I mean, it's not, this is not a city, the city's not on the management hook for any of this.
Parks.
Yep.
They're gonna have to probably figure out how to manage that. Um, Andrew, thank you for the raised crosswalks. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Do you guys have any concern, I'm sorry, this, this is one I had a lot of questions on. Remember when we were talking just a couple months ago about, um, a couple residents in Lost River were concerned about traffic speeds on the long road there? I can't remember if it was Lost River Road or Firefly.
Last River Road.
But, I mean, this looks fine, but I see a lot of just long roads here. Do we have concern with, um, and then plus, we're gonna be bringing a lot of additional traffic into this neighborhood that other neighborhoods don't see, because it's gonna be a for-rent baseball diamond complex. I mean, do we have concern about?
Well, I think that's, I mean, I see that they put the raised crosswalks in there, which I think I had talked with Andrew about, but, um, do you know if there's, you know, there's all these warrants Jim talks about. So with the warrants, I'm assuming that these long roads wouldn't qualify for any kind of other traffic calming measures besides a raised.
I mean, and he said this before, it's, it's usually engineering judgment on a lot, in a lot of cases. And I think, you know, raised crosswalks for these long roads like this would be a good traffic calming measure.
I'm sure Adam will love them.
Well, you know, sometimes we have to do things, Mr. Mayor, that staff might not personally care for when they're running a plow, but for safety, um, measures and making sure we're doing the right things is probably top priority.
As long as they're designed in a certain, in a way that, you know, buses are running longer, wheelbase is.
Otherwise, it'd probably have to have stop signs, um, just because, I mean, I just, I see this and I just think about what we just talked about on Lost River Road, and I just get a little nervous about it.
I do too, because I, I still have a lot of residents out there still questioning what, what we're gonna do about the traffic calming, since there's really no warrants or whatever the term is that, in the engineering world. Um, I do think that the raised crosswalks are gonna help, but I don't think it's, I'm not sure that that's, uh, gonna be the nail in the coffin for it. So I'm just wondering if, if Jim's gonna tell me, sorry Naomi, it doesn't meet any warrants.
I don't know what Jim, Jim will tell you, I guess.
That's what he's gonna say.
But I think that's something that can be discussed from an engineering standpoint.
Yeah.
And, you know, potentially require the, the developer to put, you know, consider things like that, so.
Well, my only final comment again is related to just the parks. It just seems odd, it just seems odd that we don't have the recommendation letter for dedication from parks and proceeding on those. I mean, I guess I would want, I don't know when that piece is gonna come in, but I guess I would want residents that are looking for uh, to purchase out here to understand what their park amenity, a large part of their park amenity is gonna be, because that's unusual. Um, I would want them to know that, that, that's gonna be an assessment for something that's likely they're not gonna be able to use very much, because it's gonna be rented out. I just, so that I just don't know, like, when that's gonna be finalized within this development.
You know, there's been some conversations with parks on these, the regional style parks. So, for example, Lost River West puts in the baseball facility. Maybe there's a number, other neighborhood across town that does tennis courts, you know, Lost River's got pickleball, and that's kind of the, the idea. Here, instead of every park having a little bit of everything, the parks become more of a regional, and then each neighborhood kind of picks up the tab on what, you know, what is getting built here, but then they go share in the other amenities across town. And so I think that was more the, the idea with all the baseball at this location.
I, I understand your point, but to Stephanie's point, um, I, I don't know if the residents can actually use that. It'd be West Fargo Baseball Association, uh, for Little League Baseball. And, uh, a majority of the time, that'll probably be rented out between that and, uh, fast pitch softball. Um, so it's, technically, it's, it's putting fields in Horace for groups to rent out.
But then, but then the residents have a special assessment for it.
And then the residents will pay and have increased traffic as a result. Just, just thoughts.
And, and I was wondering, um, you know, if, if we are gonna be having baseball or softball games there, and the number of diamonds that are going to be there, do we have the proper amount of parking? Um, I look at, you know, let's, let's take for example Fargo's huge softball complex up north, um, where they have a lot of parking. Do we have that kind of parking set aside for this park?
So, we can double check on the parking. I mean, I guess, you know, we did provide a handout that showed, uh, three parking lots. Um, I'll address maybe some of the other comments first. So first of all, just with our development, I mean, the baseball diamonds isn't the, is the, isn't the item that we pitched to the park board. I mean, we, we pitched a conservation themed park with
Yeah, I know that.
native, uh, grasses and shrubs and more, something that was a little bit more scenic, um, uh, you know, for the, for the subdivision. Um, you know, but the, the Park District was having a lot of demand for the, for the baseball fields here in Horace. And just as a baseball parent and a baseball coach, I coached my ten-year-old's team, we just got, uh, you know, we all, we got scheduled for all of our practices and games up at Elmwood, you know, and we don't have, obviously, baseball facilities down here. Um, and we have a number of Horace kids on our team. So I think, you know, as the town grows, there is gonna be a lot of Horace teams that use these ball diamonds. And so even, even if it's initially run by West Fargo Baseball, you know, I would expect in the future that there would be some sort of Horace Baseball Association. And, um, and I don't think it's too far away. So I don't, I don't think if it, even if it is rented out to West Fargo Baseball initially, I think it's going to be a lot of Horace teams or a lot of teams that have mostly Horace kids. Um, because right now we're, everyone except maybe just a handful of teams is, is going up to West Fargo or Fargo.
And I understand those points, Jack. I, we did have a talk about this, and the thing I'll come back to is the, the the residential lots in this development, picking up special assessments to pay for this. And, um, yeah, it's, it's kind of nice to have in your backyard, but if you can't use it, you know, I think a lot of people are gonna start getting disappointed in it. That's, and that's good or bad. I'm just making that point, knowing that I kind of feel the same way Stephanie does on that.
Can, can we make sure that we're assured on the front end that residents, when they're looking in this development, understand that they're gonna have the locals' assessments? And they're also gonna have a park assessment and that these are what the amenities are gonna be, if that, do you know what I'm saying? I think, I think that's fair to them in full disclosure on the front end, that they understand that. Is, and maybe that's how it went in Meadowlark, I don't, or in Lost River, I don't know.
Um, yeah, we can definitely.
It's been a while.
Yeah, uh, we can definitely, um, advertise it this way. I mean, if we, you know, get approval tonight and you know, we're still going to work with the Park District, once the load factoring is worked on by the city, I think we're going to go back to the Park District. And, uh, and then if they, if this is the, the final park that they choose, um, you know, we will be selling it this way. And there will be a, an estimate for special assessments. I mean, there's a maximum, maximum amount of assessments we'd be comfortable with while we're selling lots.
Yeah.
You know, for a baseball diamond.
It's also a draw. It's one of the things out here that we don't have a lot of, is the green space, baseball. And it'll be a draw for people to have that in their backyard, because the kids will probably be practicing there at some point.
Yep.
Eric, can, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, maybe a potential recommend motion to, or a condition to add into this is, uh, if we do a conditional approval of this to withhold record, recordation until the Park District submits their, that way, if they say they don't want it, and then we're not having to vacate an entire plat that was approved, we withhold that.
What would you, what would you do if the, I don't, I can't imagine they would, but what would you do if the Park District came back and said, we don't want it? We're gonna do cash and move.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to probably, um, you know, change up the plat quite a bit.
I mean, I'm not saying that's gonna happen. I'm just, that's, it's just, so it just feels a little unusual that we don't have all these pieces together.
Oh, definitely an unusual situation where usually the Park District is open to submitting their letter for everything.
They kind of know, right.
And so in, in this case, because there, there is interest in it, but they have not, you know, formally stated, then I would, I would say if you do decide to go forward with it providing some sort of recommendation that withholds recordation until the Park District submits their letter. Because that way, if there is a need to amend this plat based off things, we're not dealing with an already recorded plat like that.
What do you think about that, Lucas, over there?
What does the Park District want out of the special assessment policy? I feel like that's what we need to figure out.
And, and that's kind of where I'm getting confused, because the city keeps saying that they're having these talks and all these meetings about the assessment policy. However, I have no idea about the conversations that are happening, and I have no idea where you guys are at with this new policy that you guys are working on. So I feel like it's very difficult for me when we're not having a meeting to discuss this, and I was told way back when, um, that we were supposed to be having a meeting to discuss the policy a long time ago.
We're working on scenarios, we're waiting on some scenarios. State is preparing scenarios for, uh, Council Mayor Trudeau and Mayor. And I had to go through with engineering staff, uh, Matt and I, all of us, we would be going through it to see if that is a scenario that is viable to bring forward to council. So we're going through that.
I mean, I just, I just want to remind you that we did spend a substantial amount of money.
Yep.
Um, with a consultant on that.
That has been conversations, I know Mayor and Councilman Trudeau have brought up too, or have concerns too. Uh, we also have to find what can we make adjustments, but we're also, we've, that scenario with one development example, and we're, we asked to see how it would look with others. To see, okay, does this make sense or not? How does it impact more than one situation? And so there, and only here say it's preparing those, working on those, and then we'll be able to get that group to meet again. Like I said, we want to make sure that whatever is brought forward to the entire city council is something that is viable, or we see as viable. Not a, hey, does this work? And then we're trying to troubleshoot at the council level, it's trouble shot before.
Right, right.
So, and that's something, looking back, you know, we probably wish, we probably would have vetted out even more with our current policy, a little bit more. You know, we did some scenarios, but we didn't have as many.
Well, I mean, he did have justifications for thinking that he was putting in the policy, and I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, you know, I have no idea where you guys are at with it, so it's really difficult for me to really even know what's going on behind the scenes. But, Eric, I'm wondering if you can have Jim, if you can make a note to have Jim just reach out to me when he gets back. Um, I want him to take a look at this with me. Just, I am very concerned about traffic. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can so that we don't have people calling me and emailing about, um, the speeders coming through there. And I, I do appreciate the raised, um, sidewalks.
I do too.
Or crosswalks, I do. I think that that is something we definitely need to keep. But if there's any other things that Jim can think of for traffic calming measures, I would appreciate that.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I made that, I guess the other decision that's probably not, you know, the popular one among the applicant, if there are still questions like the traffic calming or some of these Park District ones, I mean, there is always the option to table for further revision.
Is, is the road, are the roads, um, is there parking on the roads? I guess I didn't, what is the, in the plat, what's the road width? I mean, are they?
It's seventy, seventy foot of right-of-way, and then the, the city standard is the thirty foot wide.
So we're, are we planning to allow parking? I'm just wondering with the baseball amenity, are we planning to allow parking on the Pioneer Drive and?
I think we, that would facilitate parking on one side of the street.
Okay, okay.
You know, another thing we could do to help with traffic is at those crossing points, we could narrow the road up to twenty-four. I mean, we have the parking or the width there for parking on one side. Um, but at those crosswalks, I, we could look at narrowing that up to a twenty-four foot lane, and that's something we'd have to bridge with.
To calm a little.
It basically makes you feel kind of pinched as you go through there, so you don't, you don't feel wide open. You want to slow down, because you're, you're getting kind of.
Yeah, there's, there's a host of things you can do to, 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 design-wise.
Okay. I don't know. I mean, Jeff and Stephanie, I mean, did, did you want to approve it tonight, or did you want to, um, talk about it more?
I'm probably most, mostly inclined to be comfortable going ahead, um, as, but, I mean, my hesitation is just, is just the park issue, but if we can come up with something that's reasonable, what do you think, Jeff?
I'll go for Jeff's answers. I, just in case, I know there are some residents here tonight as well, so we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you guys had anything to add.
Nope, I'm waiting for section twenty-four to come up.
Twenty-four.
Where we going?
We going.
Do you guys want to address the council? We can sit down.
Absolutely.
We have to help, we have to text twenty-four, I'm not sure.
I don't have a section twenty-four.
They just talk about the property, section twenty-four.
Oh.
Oh, gotcha.
I thought you meant item twenty-four.
Go ahead.
You guys want to read your, whatever you gotta do? On, on section twenty-four.
Can you show us?
Item, biggest share of the southeast quarter of that land.
I'm sorry, what's your last name?
What's that?
What's your last name?
Mike Fosse.
This one right here?
Yep, that whole, everything there. So I own all that. And for yous that don't know it, that's part of Warren Township. Warren Township is established ag and agriculture. I am actively farming and ranching.
Okay.
So if you change this ordinance, we have a whole lot of problems going in.
Okay, explain.
Farming and ranching don't work in the city ordinance.
But it would only pertain to Jack's, the, the?
That's not what the wording said.
The wording says the whole half section.
The whole east half.
I don't want to interfere with Jack's going on.
No.
At the northeast quarter of that section.
Lucas?
Is that stated in there?
It would just be to the part that's up there.
And we're talking the rezone portion that we're discussing, right?
Yes. He's talking about the rezone ordinance, but I don't think that pertains to his land.
The description of the plat is.
But the letter came out saying the whole east half.
Okay, well, I'm not comfortable changing their land.
Mike has eleven of them.
Can I see it?
The proposal from the applicant is not to change the whole land. The proposal the applicant is within the bounds of.
It might say a plat of part of the southeast quarter of section thirteen?
A plat of part of the southeast quarter of section thirteen and the east half of section twenty-four Township, one thirty-eight north, range fifty, to be known as Lost River West. But that doesn't include, that, that wouldn't include his property, would it?
The legal description in the plat would be, so that's just an abbreviated legal. If you go down to the second page or the third page is where we're going to get into the legal description. And that one's going to be the specific needs and bounds. The outside boundary is going to be the, so if you, the, there's the full legal. And that's going to describe the outside boundary. So what, so what the, what the notice is saying with the letter, I do have the letter in my file, it's using that top part, so that summary part. And in the summary part, it's showing the east half of section twenty-four, but it's, um, it would just be part of the east half. Would it be a, is it a problem for you, Mike, if we apply up to your property?
All I'm saying is, the way I read it, they were taking the whole half section.
And you're not reading it wrong. I'm reading it too.
Not to interfere with Jack's going.
Right, but we don't want to interfere with your farming either, so.
If you reword that to where it was the northeast quarter of that section, we'd both be good.
Right.
So Lucas, you might want to review that and maybe get that description.
The intent's not to rezone your property.
Are we?
Well, that's, that's not the way I read that.
I'm with you.
Thank you so much.
Can we, um? Look at the title of it. As Jack said, if you get into the actual long description, it's different.
It is different.
If you look at the needs and balances, Jase, can you go into the?
What page is that?
The legal description.
Be the fourth page of the plat.
There you go.
Or page fourteen in your packet, or at least if they're separated.
But the notices that get sent out, the letters that get sent out, don't include the needs and balances description because it gets long?
So what do we need to do here? We just need to make some revisions to the, to the legal description?
Yeah, we need to make sure the ordinance doesn't have all the east half in it for the rezone ordinance.
Should we just, uh, table this? We can keep the public hearing open?
I do think we should table it because I want it to be reflected correctly.
Well, that's why we have two readings of the rezone, which is better.
Okay, so we're okay with that then?
Okay.
So they have, they have to do two readings of, of an ordinance and a rezone ordinance. So there's a first and a second reading. So the second reading, they'll do it at their next meeting. We'll revise it to make sure it all looks, make sure that this rezone only covers the developer portion.
Yep.
And I guess it would go to, it would go to sell details lot and what district it's going for. So this would follow the, the plat that lists out what lots and blocks.
Actually, so it'll say lots one through twenty of block one are changing from egg to whatever you don't need this or this.
Okay, and leave his property.
Yeah, the, the intent of the request, and I a hundred percent understand the wording of the letter that we're now, but the intent of the request was within the boundaries of this plat and not additional property.
It works.
Thank you so much for, thank you so much for voting.
Apologies for the confusion.
All right, Jase, so what do we want to do here?
I, I guess it's, it's up to you. If you do go forward with approval tonight, I would recommend possibly additional commission just because of the unknown of that park property. And to echo Councilman Lasterman's concern, that's not usual. We usually always get a request.
Yep, I know.
But this was one that pending timeline of that final discussion of one special assessment policy was going to be done versus sticking to timelines of getting applications through like they weren't mashing up. So this.
So how do we want to word that? If we were going to make a motion to accept the rezone ordinance with? With, with, with condition that lots, or that the plat does not get recorded until the Park District issues their recommendation letter for a lot. I guess that one's different, but it'd be lot, what do I got, lot nine, block six?
I think so.
Through there? Or just their, their public land dedication recommendation for Lost River West addition, make it broad because they could come back and say, you know, we, we want cash and lieu. I don't, I don't see that happening, but they could do that. And then that would obviously force Jack to re, replat and probably restart the process. Well, the reason I'm putting that in there is just to avoid recording it. Then they come back and say, no, we don't want it. We want cash and lieu. And then we have our already recorded piece of property that we have to then go through. So to cover this then, we could say, you know, approving the rezone on the first read contingent upon the?
Like what Jase is discussing is for the plat stuff. What you're discussing is for the rezone.
Great. Yeah, I'm going for the rezone, that part of it, for the start.
The rezone's fine. We just need to ensure that it sticks to the plat.
Yep, okay.
Which we will do. Because like Jay said, when we actually do, the ordinance itself is longer than the notice that gets sent out.
Right, I got it.
So that will actually say in there the lots and blocks that are being rezoned. It will not include Fosse's property to the zone.
Okay, so the rezone would be okay as it stands right now?
Correct.
But the plat would be where we're talking about, that the Park Board would have, we'd be contingent on the Park Board having your public land dedication.
Correct.
Jeff, what do you think?
Uh, I'd rather wait to, to move ahead, but, um.
Yeah, I don't really.
I would like the Park Board to at least be a little more solid on what they want to do.
All right, but that's what we'll make a contingent on this. So we don't, like you said, we don't have to go back here if, you know, even if they don't, we can come up with something.
Well, the, uh, Park District meets on Monday, right? This is coming Monday?
Is it the fourth? Yeah, next Monday.
But maybe they're, but maybe they'll be in the same holding pattern they're, they are today, saying.
Yeah.
But I feel like they need to have a conversation. What is it? What is the issue with the load factoring? Like, the, the issue is something, so what is it? So the city knows that.
Like, what's the issue?
What?
Like, with them? Like, what, what exactly are they?
You're adding on to the conversation.
Yeah. Like, what is their, what is their complaint? It's the load factoring, correct?
Is that, that's what I'm asking.
As far as, as far as you are aware, it's kind of been notified by the Park District as it's the, the potential load factoring for future assessments.
Because what is it, five to one or five?
Yeah, it's five. For public facilities, it's five. So that'd be parks and city-owned property. So, that was, that was their concern, is that load factoring and how the developments overall, special assessments would impact them.
Well, I mean, I want to be respectful of Jeff's, um, reservation. If he wants to wait until the Park Board has a conversation, is that what you want, Jeff?
But if someone's going to ask that the Park Board discussed, this is what I'm trying to say, is that there, it can't just be the cities and having this motion and just going to sit on this plat. The Park Board has said what they need already. They want the city to revise the special assessment policy.
Well, I can't speak to that because the city hasn't involved me in that conversation. So I don't know.
But I mean, I think it'd be prudent, who, Councilmember Lasterman, are you on, the Park District is your portfolio, right? Would it be prudent for you to go into the meeting on Monday to ask them what they're looking for from the, for changes in special assessment policy or to let them know that the city council is having this discussion tonight of, okay, we're trying to approve this plat. Sorry, I understand that you're not making a recommendation because you're waiting on the city council to do something. What is it that you're looking for? We're trying to approve this plat so we can dedicate this lot to?
I, I absolutely could do that. I'm actually going to be out of town on Monday, um, so I would not be able to attend the meeting on Monday, but.
I can go.
Okay, I can, okay. I mean, I think it's pretty clear what, what they're looking for. I don't know what the resolution of it is. And I should say, Mr. Dwyer, I, it would not be my intent to hold anything up unnecessarily on this. Um, that's not my intent. Um, and so I don't know if it would, if it would rectify my concern by, by saying that we wouldn't record the plat, we'd move forward, but we wouldn't record the plat. I don't, Jeff, I mean, what do you think about that? Or do you think we should just hold in general?
I think that's what we're talking.
Yes, can do that.
Okay. I mean, Jeff, what is that, what does that do for all intent and purposes? If we move forward and approve it, but we don't record it?
I, you know, okay, either way, we've got time. And so we need to go down and visit with the Park District some more, no matter what, whether we pass the motion tonight or not. Um, I think it would probably be the most efficient use of the council's time to handle it tonight. But, um, you know, I'll, I'm planning on visiting with the Park District more.
Okay.
So.
So Jase, I think we can still solve this just by saying, you know, the plat, we can approve it, you know, contingent upon the public land discussion with the Park Board. Yeah, I, I think that at least doesn't solidify because if we record the plat with Park District bringing the owner within their order of a piece that, you know, maybe their mind has changed and they don't want it. If we can at least withhold until that letter is submitted, then we, we know for sure what they're looking for. And we can probably bring it back and just say, here's the letter. Council can give us the green light to report at whatever time. Warren's sure to do that. That at least gives that kind of buffer of, of this unprecedented scenario where we don't get a letter based on a city policy. Right, but we can keep moving it forward. That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Okay. Well, let's just, I'm ready. Um, I will make a motion.
Hang on, let me, okay, we're done? Anybody else done or any other conversation on this?
My only other comment was, was just in general, I just, I guess for resident information, it's being rezoned to R six, but act, in actuality, um, the lots are much bigger than that compact development level. I guess I don't know why you're doing R six, but I mean, the, the plat has, for the most part, way larger lots than an R six.
Correct. For the most part, it would just be flexibility with the building product they can put on.
That's what I figured. So I mean, it, there, it's a large lot of development, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so we have to tighten the, the side yard setbacks down. Um, the R four, I think we liked that twenty-five front yard setback. So under the previous ordinance or the one that you guys are just moving out of.
Yeah.
Um, the option was either, I think for us, either R six or R four, we picked R six because of the front yard setback. Because there are a few lots that aren't as deep as we'd like them to be just because of the site restraints. Um, so that's why we picked the R six.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to share that with residents. It's, it's a, it's a large lot of development. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then for both the rezone and the plat. Um, again, I think I'll go for we approve the rezone ordinance first reading with, uh, Lucas making some corrections for the second go around.
Okay. I'll make that motion, please.
Okay. You want me to make some motion on that? Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Stephanie does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. I'm going to do the same thing for the plat. We'll do the plat with the, um, condition that the Park Board's got to do the public land dedication before we record. Okay, so we want to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
You want me to do the second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Branton, let's talk about mowers.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, before you is a proposal for the purchase of four, uh, new lawnmowers for Public Works. They are within the budget. We had a budgeted amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred, that's in twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, two of the mowers, might I say, let's see here, let's see. I gotta make sure I get this right here off the, we had three or four different mowers. I believe it was two zero Toro Z Master Zero Turn Five Thousand Series. Uh, total cost twenty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. One Toro Z Master Zero Turns seventy-five hundred series for forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-one. So that's just a bigger one, wider deck. And then also purchase of a ground master thirty-two hundred, four-wheel drive for twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-three thousand eighty-eight cents. Uh, the city, we would trade in our John Dear Zero Z nine sixty M mower. That's our, our green John Dear one. Uh, the trade-in value of that is five thousand dollars. The other one would be our Hustler, uh, nine-three-nine-four-six-two rotary mower. That's a wider deck mower that we have, um, for ten thousand dollars. With the trade-ins and then the purchase of the four mowers, it comes in eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, does keep us slightly below our budget that we had set. Uh, this does help Public Works quite a bit. If you look at just, for example, uh, Cub Creek and Rivers Edge, second, those two developments, they'll be coming online this year. Uh, I was talking to their Public Works staff today and they indicated now add about twenty acres of additional mowing when you add in all the ponds and everything going on. Uh, and that's part of the need there, why we need to have that. Uh, the variety of the different mowers gives us some difference, continues to have different sizes so we can apply them in different situations. So we're not trying to mow a tight area with a big mower vice versa. You know, or open area, we have big mower to make more efficient use of our time.
Right.
So, um, with that, we're just seeking authorization, move forward with that purchase. Like I said, is budgeted. We were looking at some different scenarios of how we could do this, but we're looking at how we get the most mowers to impact mowing for the city as a whole. So that's why we're proposing what we are.
Okay. Yeah.
Question?
Yep.
Um, I thought we were looking at getting a, oh, a, a four-wheel drive mower that was with a Ventrak or something.
We were looking at getting another Ventrak. However, Public Works is asking that we go with these because we could get additional mowers. We'd keep our Ventrak for another year and come back next year with a Ventrak. Um, this, this was just their request for this is really to help focus on having capability to mow more area and having those, the additional mower, mower, mowers would help us there. So that is why.
Yeah, so my, my, my comment to that would be, um, any kind of hillsides around ponds and stuff like that, are we going to be limited to one mower, a four-wheel drive mower?
Our main mower, yeah.
Having a zero turn on hills is not the optimum thing, so.
Yes, we are, we'd be limited to the same, you know, one mower for hillsides. But that would be applied in those situations more specifically. Uh, if we were to buy a Ventrak, you know, those run about, I believe around that forty to fifty thousand range for a Ventrak. So.
Yeah, I thought the original budget for this year was, um, three mowers, one of being a Ventrak. So that's around, here we're getting four mowers and none of them are Ventrak.
Yep.
But then are we going to have to turn around and spend additional funds next year?
We will probably be coming to you at some point next year, within the next year or two for another, for another Ventrak.
And how much did you say that was?
The Ventraks around the, in the ballpark, around forty to fifty thousand, depending on the attachments or items that you get for it.
Right, I was going to say a Ventrak you could also use in the winter time for snow removal on sidewalks and stuff like that.
Yeah, if you have all the attachments for it, so.
Okay, what do you guys want to do? We're going to need more, we're going to need more mowers.
Public, Public Works is looking at, focused on being able to keep up with the mowing as much as possible. That's what they're looking at. I understand the concern.
Does Adam have, like, a schedule made out for that? Is it like?
Do you need to have a staff for them all?
Well, if we're fully staffed, do you? Well, if we're fully staffed, do you believe you'd be at six full-time or seven full-time? We have six full-time right now, so. Would we have, be able to have staff, yes, and we'd be able to rotate the mowers a little bit, however, uh, that's if we have quite a few of the guys out there mowing at the time, so. But like I said, he was looking at how do we keep up with the mowing and making sure we have enough, enough equipment to be able to do so. Cause we do have times also where mower will be down, you know, the, these mowers, they get, they get worked hard, so.
Okay, what do you guys, you looking to do? I guess I'd recommend being a staff, propose this, that they, they went through the motions with this thing, I'd say that we purchase them as recommended here.
I'm fine with that, I can make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Jeff makes a motion, Stephanie is a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Eric, what do you got?
Uh, a few project updates. First, it'll be sixty-fourth out of new project, um, slowly making our way through, um, finalizing plans on that, probably about ninety percent. Just got electrical and landscaping kind of the final touches, and then we'll, um, sit down and review with city staff and, and Sarah. And then I guess early May is what we're looking at for, for bidding and, or I mean, excuse me, uh, final plans, and then later in, in May for bidding. Uh, U-Bet to drive that project, we do have final plans, just waiting on, on city approval and those discussions. And then, uh, we, shared use path, uh, we did have a bid opening on last Friday, on the twelfth. So we got some favorable, uh, numbers, we had, I was told three bidders, um, but I for sure know two border states and northern improvements. They, um, the parent will bid with border states with about three hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred eighteen dollars, um, some change, so.
Where is that, what section of you, uh, shared use path is that again?
That is from, I believe, the school.
Basically on the, the east side of County Road seventeen, from the school crosswalk up to eighty-first connecting into that shared use path.
Okay.
Just north of the, run through Casey's, run past Interstate's office, all the way up into Lakeview Heights.
Good, okay.
So, and that project, just as a reminder, I guess it's got federal funds, the eighty-twenty cost shares, so.
Yeah.
I guess where it is right now, DOT is reviewing the bid, and then they'll send a letter to, um, advise if the city may award or not. And then they will follow up after that's presented to you guys, so.
Okay. Any questions for Eric?
No, thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Breton, what do you got?
Um, first one I have is, I said for Jeff, on MetroCog Executive Committee last week, uh, MetroCog Executive Committee looked at, uh, updating their unified plan work programs, so like their budget. Um, and funding updates for that, they talked about, uh, some scenarios and how they'll impact, or could impact, uh, funding studies in the future. One of the big things they're pushing for is just making sure that when they commit to a study, they actually get that, get it moving and get the funding spent within the given time period that they have, otherwise it'll impact them on later years. Uh, the other item they had was to allow Kindred, uh, associate membership into MetroCog, so then they would be able to be a member of MetroCog and they would help them out with a comprehensive plan update that they're gonna be doing for the city Kindred. So, uh, with that, they moved forward with both of those, that will be going to the MetroCog Board later this week, I believe. Uh, I should be able to sit in for that, for Jeff for that one. Other item I had is yard waste station, we should be getting the dumpsters, uh, anticipated delivery date for those dumpsters, for compost dumpsters is Wednesday. We should have it up and running before, or by the weekend, but might be open a little sooner depending on if the dumpsters are delivered on time, so. And then the last one I had is, we've had some complaints over the weekend about dogs barking and dogs off leash. And one concern that was brought up to city staff was in regards to dogs barking, but then folks have, they called the Cass County Sheriff's Department and Cass County was apparently indicating that if it wasn't a vicious dog or a dog off leash and it wasn't a vicious dog, they wouldn't do anything about it. I did address that with Sheriff Johnner today, and he said that he would be touching base with all his deputies and dispatch about that, that if there's complaints about dogs barking or off leash, anything like that, they would be still addressing, so. And it isn't just if it's a vicious, they would be addressing, so, um, like I said, I did discuss that with Sheriff Johnner, and he should be addressing the deputies and the dispatch about it, so they're on the same page, so.
Yeah, I know, and I've seen that too, that we've had complaints even over in Lost River of dogs running around too, so, but, alright. I guess something we're gonna have to keep an eye on a little bit.
Yep, oh, and I do, I guess I do, sorry, apologize, I have another one, was, uh, candidates for each of the seats, uh, up for election. We had, if I could pull it up real quick, for mayor, the only candidate for that one is Jeff Trudeau. So Jeff, you're running for mayor again, or for this go-around. I'll pull out my report here. For city council, Naomi is rerunning, and then Rachel Dwyer, and then Jordan Gross, I can't pronounce your last name, Jordan, apologize.
It's just like Mouse, so.
Gross, yep, okay, um, for park board, you had Wade Frank, Jason, Jason Olson, Shannon Kiss, and TJ Ash. Or Thomas Ash, he goes by TJ, yep, TJ. And then for judge, we have Jessica Schminski, um.
Jamie.
Maggie, right, you go by Maggie, what it said, Magdalena Brockell.
Oh.
Uh, and then Jamie Schleibel, Schi- Schiabel, is it?
Shite.
Shite, Shite, yeah, I can't, I'm bad pronouncing the last names there, so we have races for three of the four, well, yeah, races for four of four, but uh, more than one candidate, or multiple candidates for three of the four positions, so. But we have that, election is June eleventh, uh, all the information from our side has been turned into the county, and we should be good to go.
Nice, thank you.
And also voting will be at Sewer Center, not Fire Hall this year, so we'll share that when we get closer to that time. But it is a little different from last couple times we've had it, so it's not here, it's at Sewer Center this time.
No, okay, sounds good. Alright, move on to portfolio reports, um, so we're getting together on Wednesday, we're gonna talk to Fargo about the sewer line project, see if we can come up with some funding mechanism for that, see if we can get that finalized here. So meeting with those guys, I'm gonna be meeting with the mayors tomorrow afternoon around five o'clock, be our final get-together as the five of us, so talk about some other stuff around town here too, but that's what I've got going on. Naomi, what do you got?
Do I have anything, Jase?
You have planning coordination meeting tomorrow morning at nine AM?
Yes, yes, I do have a meeting tomorrow morning, planning coordination meeting, um, those are always fun. Um, otherwise, I guess I'll have to get together with Jase here probably this week and go over a few things with my planning and zoning portfolio. Because we are super busy.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
That's it.
Stephanie, what you got?
Um, I just have a couple things, um, a resident had reached out and then I went and looked a little bit too, um, I think, I mean, I think we need to look at some erosion control. Uh, the rain we had and the wind showed really, really difficult, uh, erosion situations in Cub Creek, Lakeview and, and, uh, was it all the way up?
Southdale.
In Southdale, a- all the way up, I mean, I, I mean, I actually was a little astonished when I went and took a look, so I don't know why they're not, I don't know why there are erosion barriers. Um, I mean, we, we purchased a street sweeper and we had this discussion about how we need to be, um, you know, working within EPA guidelines for what's going into our sewer system, and then there is so much dirt covering all of the curbs and everything that, I mean, there was nothing, so. Is that just, is that like a basic thing that the developer should be putting down right along the edge of the properties or?
New developments, Eric, you could touch base on a lot of those.
Second, that's ongoing construction, so I'm the project manager for that one, so I've already reached out to the contractor.
Very, okay, good.
And they have, they were out there, um, last week, actually.
Okay, good.
Cleaning up some of that, I mean, it's, but yeah, they, they have been contacted.
Good.
For existing developments where there's building going on, where the project's already been final, they do have a SWIP that they need to.
Yep.
Adhere to with, with the city.
Okay.
Joel usually monitors that and gets them, I think, so.
I think that little storm just kind of brought.
Yeah.
The issue to light.
Yeah, it got really windy that weekend.
It got a really big wave.
It's North Dakota.
We had a windstorm and a lot of dirt around, and then there's the catch-up, and there's typically when we have that dynamic, what you described, you know, where we have a lot of that, it does take, you know, our staff is out there, interstate staff also, are out there hounding contractors and builders and everybody saying, hey, gotta get this up, gotta get, gotta get this cleaned up. And can they get everything cleaned up? They get on the street, you know, sidewalks, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Sometimes like the yards and stuff is a little harder for them, but, uh, we do go out and hound them about that, so.
Because I'd hate to see too much staff time having to be taken, and your time to be honest, I mean, I think that must be one-on-one for a developer and a builder.
It takes quite a bit.
They would, that they would just, just do that as a matter of, of best practice.
It, it unfortunately does take quite a bit of staff time of.
Well, that's.
And that's, that's everywhere.
But it is a legal thing though, so they should be really following.
So by the time that I contacted the contractor, they were already aware of it, and they were planning on getting out there, so, I mean, they are typically aware of things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some move quicker than others, but yes, we are typically out there, especially like builders, you know, our building inspection staff and, uh, Joel, our project manager, Public Works also, they're out there, hey, gotta get this cleaned up, gotta do this cleaned up, so. And we've been trying to push them harder and harder each year.
Okay.
To comply with that, because if they don't comply, you know, we could, we're able to document, hey. Yep. We are talking to them, or if they're not complying, we'll send them emails or whatever we need to do, and then if they aren't compliant, then if the state or FEMA sees that, they see what we've done, they see that we're trying, and then they may come down on the developer or the builder, whoever, and less likely come down on the city because they see that we're actually doing some efforts on it, so, yep.
And then with the compost area, it might be, it might be a good idea to maybe send out a maybe another Facebook post or something about, um, what can and can't go there. You know, maybe that's a good rec, cause my neighbor was asking the other day what size, uh, tree limbs and stuff could be brought there, and I couldn't remember if that four-inch diameter requirement was a special or if there's bigger, so maybe we could just let residents know again. Okay, oh, good, perfect.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but that actually, talking about the compost site, um, I had a resident reach out and ask, like, if the hours can be extended to just like leave the gate open, is that a possibility? To be able to use it like later in the evenings and?
If the council would like the gates open longer.
Cause what time do you normally close them?
I, I say I know it fluctuates a little bit because typically it's based on if we're having problems out there.
Right.
If we're.
So if we have respectful, you know, respectful, um, consideration of the, of the compost site, I mean, I would be okay with keeping it open so the residents can use it, cause I know a lot of people do, I mean, the sun's out till ten o'clock.
Yeah.
In the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can keep it open there, like I said, we typically, as long as we're not having it.
Abused.
Abused, and typically when it gets abused, that's when you have to.
Do you think we could do like a trial run to try to keep it open?
Try, we typically do, and then ends up.
Then it ends up being.
So, uh, also if folks are planning on doing that, if the gates are shut, but they give us a call, we could coordinate with them, say, hey, we'll leave it open, or we'll do this, so as long as they call us, we're typically able to work.
I mean, I live right down there, if you wanna give me a key too, they can always give me a call.
Yeah, I'll talk with our staff about it, so I know one thing we would like to long-term is do some future improvements out there and also get some security cameras out there too, that would be something I know in the future, we'd like to have out there to help, help deter some of the abuse of it.
So where'd we land? Do you think you're gonna leave it open a little bit later?
I'll talk with our staff to leave it open. Council would like it open longer, we could talk with our staff, so, yep.
Anything else?
No, just real quick, um, I'm just hoping we can shore up some linking issues we've had with the agenda and the meeting packet on the website. And my, my only, my only reason for bringing that up is I just wanna make sure residents have an opportunity in enough advance to see the agenda and the information that we're reviewing tonight. And then we are working hard on Bean Day's planning already, we have another planning meeting on Wednesday, um, sure will be a fabulous event again in, do I say it, September? In September this year, so, and that's all that I have.
Okay, Jeff, you got anything?
Uh, real quick, uh, Brenton, Brenton mentioned gates and, uh, signs, so I'm gonna ask about, uh, Maple Lakes down there, um, if we have any, uh, signs yet, uh, or where are they at?
I believe they've gotten quite a few signs in, I actually brought this up with our staff today, and they haven't gotten them installed yet, but I've been hounding them, so. Pushing them to get them in as soon as we can, so they should be in, and that's addressing also no parking, hadn't heard, I don't recall otherwise, not having those in, but like I said, we're encouraging them to get them done soon, so, yeah.
The only other thing I had was.
Locate, locates having. Oh, sorry, I apologize, locates have been called in for those, is what I was told too.
Yeah, so thank you for stepping in for MetroCog for me, um, I will be traveling on Thursday back to Horace. So I just sent you an email today.
Yep.
See if I could find either you or Jase to step in for me there.
Yep.
Another net, that's all I got.
Okay, sounds good, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, alright, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for connecting.